Turn on our microphones. We're coming out of executive session with discussion of legal items and no action taken. So now we are back into the full session of the town council meeting that's already been called to order. We are now going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, thanks everyone for showing up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Now, we're going to enter into the public hearing portion of tonight's events. Madam Clerk, will you?
Good evening. So, we are opening up the Snake River Junction Annexation Public Hearing. The annexation has been properly advertised and noticed to all properties, well, all property owners within, and then all property owners within 500 feet. The goal of this public hearing is to determine that the annexation of the areas for the protection of health, safety, and welfare of the persons residing in the area and the city or town, the urban development of the area sought to be annexed would constitute a natural geographical, economical, and social part of the annexing city or town. The area sought to be annexed is a logical and feasible addition to the annexing city or town and the extension of basic or other services customarily available to residents of the city or town within reason shall be available to the area proposed to be annexed. The area sought to be annexed is contiguous with or adjacent to the annexing city or town, or the area is owned by the city or town. The annexing town not less than 20 business days prior to the public hearing, as required by Wyoming statute, has sent certified mail to all landowners and affected public utilities within the territory, and by first-class mail to any person's owning property that is within 500 feet of the territory proposed to be annexed, regardless of whether or not the property was inside or outside of the corporate limits of the Town of Alpine. A summary of the proposed annexation report, as required under the statute, and notice of the time, date, and location of the public hearing was also included. And then there's some other just clarifications about what it means to be contiguous and what it means to Business Day on that. So, if you'd like to invite the petitioners?
Yes, of course. So, we have satisfied all of our statutory requirements up to this point?
Correct. Yeah, and for anybody who hasn't read it, or wasn't in the noticed area, or didn't see the advertisements in the paper, the annexation report and the annexation summary report is all attached to the agenda and can be found on the town's website under Meetings and Agendas.
That's good. Thank you. I'll invite the petitioner to come up to the podium for your, come on up Bud. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Bud Chatham with Alpine Valley Resort. My wife and I own the resort, and we're part of the petition. From the standpoint for us, we've been talking with the mayor for the last year and a half or so about the possibility of annexing into the town. Kind of reversing back, I think for us, maybe annexing into town would have made a lot more sense when we, before we build the resort. Now, for us, mainly our goal is, is that we really want, we already feel like we're a part of the Town of Alpine, we want to make it official, and really like for our tax dollars that we have, lodging tax dollars, to come into the town and be used as the town sees fit. So, that's basically kind of our process in talking with the mayor and to staff. It was more of a how the process should do if we want to annex in, should we communicate to other people in the area if they like to take that opportunity too. I've been really, I know what we would like to do, I haven't tried to put those opinions on other lot owners in the area, just been really just from our standpoint presenting information and not wanting to be the person that tells you or tells them whether it's best for them to do or not to do, but just kind of let them know this is what we're doing, and if they'd like to join in on the petition, that's great. The homeowners association next to us has jumped in, and quite a few of the lots within the Snake River Junction have signed on too. So, yeah, we're excited to be at this point and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And just to clarify, you already use all of our resources, the water and sewer?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, we did, that's kind of the learning portion of us, we were already connected to water and sewer, we paid up, we've paid all of the fees already, the out-of-town fees for our whole property already. So, we won't be contributing anymore, you know, to the system than was already projected for the area.
Same way, do you have any questions for Bud?
Great.
It's not germane to the proceedings, but I know you do have some plans for some things in the future, and I think we've discussed them. I don't know if you want to talk about them now, but I think it's a great thing that you're doing, so feel free to mention it if you don't.
Sure. Yeah, happy to. So, we're with our RV park, we also were approved with our permits cabins, tent cabins associated with that, and then a lodge that we are currently have designed and have submitted to engineers. We met with the planning department a few weeks ago on that. Within the lodge, the plan that we have there, you know, we're still working through, you know, what for sure we're gonna do, but we're hoping to have an outdoor area with a pool, really nice design that represents the town well from that standpoint. And, yeah, that's, you know, that's kind of our next step. We're working in unison with the timeframe that we have with the annexation process so that upon the third reading, hopefully we can come close to break ground here in the spring.
Yep, we won't pull the trigger pretty quick for you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Anyone have any questions for Bud?
My biggest question is always, first and foremost, infrastructure. So, since you're already tapped in utilizing what we have, you're not creating a large usage that we need to prepare for, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate that you understand not just where the taxpayer dollars go because they are so instrumental to the solency of our town as we move forward, but also that you're willing to come in with stricter regulations, because we are a lot stricter than the county, and really make a plan that's transparent for us moving forward.
Sure.
So, I just want to let you know that I see that work, and I appreciate it.
Cool. Well, thank you. Thanks for that acknowledgement. And like I said, we're, we feel like we're a part of the town already, being so close, but, you know, it's important for us to be, you know, a good partner with what we're doing and, you know, contribute more things to town from that standpoint. And the tax dollars that hopefully will be generating over the years will, as the town sees fit, to use them would be great.
That's huge. And, yeah, that's obviously one of the biggest benefits to the RV park coming in. They're gonna generate a ton of lodging tax dollars that we can put to good use with programs like, you know, all the things we do, you know, the music, the grooming that we do in the winter, other programs, and it's just going to go up from there. So, we're just excited about that.
I hope.
You want to be reliable, trust me.
I hope you're right.
Using businesses and bringing in those tax dollars.
And our goal too, I mean, we really try to develop the park so that it's a park that's a well-represented park landscaping-wise, you know, service-wise, amenities-wise, so that, you know, when people come in here, yeah, they want to come back, so.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Only last point.
Sure.
When you're in the Town of Alpine, do all the residents in the town?
You put me on the spot, huh? Well, I have to say yes. Hannah and Joey are watching this through Zoom right now. They're like, Bud, that's why you wanted us here, so.
Maybe we'll figure something out eventually.
Yeah, so, great.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
I don't know if we have our other?
In addition to Mr. Chatham, who clearly is the largest landowner within the petition, I do just want to disclose that the Town of Alpine is a party to this petition as well. The Town of Alpine is annexing the roadway that's adjacent to this land into the Town of Alpine to allow for the future expansion of town.
So, this includes all the highway out here to pass the flying saddle. So, that will all be in the Town of Alpine as well. Madam Clerk, do we have any other petitioners?
No. Mr. Sepola was supposed to join us by phone, but he is, he is not there on the call.
Okay. I'll try one more time. If there's any public comment, you're more than welcome to come up now and come to the podium and state your name, but wait until you, wait till you're on the microphone.
Jacqueline Chalky. So, since you're gonna adopt the highway, are you responsible for plowing it?
We are not. It's a state highway, so the YDOT still is in charge of that. We will be taking over, hopefully I can show you here, there's Emerger Lane is right here. There's another road that comes back here, I'm sorry, I don't remember the names.
Blue Wing.
Yeah, and then there's another one that's over here. We already do this one because there's a lift station right here, so we're already plowing that as a town, and we're working through some of the specifics with Mr. Chatham about responsibilities, and he has some plans to improve and expand the parking for along Emerger Lane, and we will be in future discussions dealing with that, and it'll probably be like an annexation agreement that has to be in place to, just to clarify who's responsible. But, at this point, our Public Works Director is already doing a fair amount of plowing over here, so there's not that much more that we have to do, but I think the tax dollars that they're bringing in will more than make up for the time that we will be spending plowing in the future.
Okay. My main concern is just the highway.
Yeah.
That's a big, that's a big problem.
Depending upon town population. So, once the town reaches a population officially of 1,500 or more, then we will be responsible for plowing the highway.
And to clarify, and I've talked to YDOT about this on several occasions, but obviously we already own the highway that goes here and all the way through town, and eventually, you know, if this goes through all the way out by flying saddle, YDOT is not going to pull up their plows as they're coming through and leave the mess to us. Basically, what they're going to do is just plow it to the side of the road, and then we will be responsible for cleaning up all the, you know, the curb cuts, all the accesses to business, and all that is gonna fall on us. Very similar to the way it works right now, as I think, hopefully no one disagrees with this, but our guys do an amazing job cleaning up the streets, so we anticipate very similar product when that, when that happens. Any other public comments, please? Do you mind coming up? Yep.
Hi, I'm Lisa Jackson. I am a board member and resident homeowner at the Snake River Junction Townhomes. I just want, Joseph Cipro does a lot of the communication for us, he's been working closely with Bud. Just wanted to state that we're here and that we're excited to be a part of this town, and, you know, we're a small community, I think we're up to about 19 units at this point, so as a community as a whole, we felt it was beneficial for a lot of reasons to become a part, and found out that so many people adjacent to us were joining, so just wanted to let you know we're here and excited to be part of the process, so.
Thank you so much for coming. We thought Joe was gonna be on the line, and he wasn't, so that's what we're doing there, but, so, and again, you were currently using Town of Alpine resources for all those condos are hooked up to town resources.
Correct. Yep.
Any questions? All right, thank you for coming. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Luke Astle. I'm a resident of Alpine. Jeremy had just mentioned something, and I guess first off, I should clarify, I think that it's exciting to hear about the annexation. You know, I think by and large, I think it's probably favorable to the town, but it just stirred a question in my head, like, if we're a town of, what, 1,200 people now, the annexation, do we know what that does to population, does that get us to that 1,500?
It waits on census.
Oh, it'll be towards the next census. It's not like immediate impact. All right, so by then we'll be over 1,500 anyways, regardless of what this happens. Okay, that answers my question. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other questions? Public comment? What else do we need to do, Madam Clerk?
If there's nothing else, we probably should close the hearing and wait to start the meeting, the rest of the meeting at seven.
Yeah. Last chance for public comment.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I will add something. I just wanted to say that the RV park has already been a really good partner to the town. They are always very supportive when we ask for things, and donations for events or fundraisers, and they do offer their locals weekend in the fall, which is great.
For staycation.
Yeah. If you want to just go, like, pretend to be there for us, then it's kind of fun.
And swim in the new swimming pool.
And we really like the big beautiful fountain that Jonathan did.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I agree. They've always been super open to anything we've asked for, so, yeah, look forward to it. So, if there's no further public comment, I want to make sure, Mr. Sanderson?
I don't know if this is your public comment, but you do need to make a finding on what the area is for the health, safety, and welfare of persons.
Oh, okay. Do we need a motion? Or do I just need to say this is for the health, safety?
Whoever the petitioner is, how does this give us better health, safety, and welfare?
Mr. Chatham, can you come back up real quick? We're just gonna ask you a real quick question. In your opinion, how does this annexation affect or positively affect the health, welfare, and safety of the Town of Alpine? Just in general?
In general? Well, being in the proximity of our facility to the town and already being hooked up to town services, having that relationship with the town, if anything happens, you know, for emergency reasons, I know the town is the one that's responsible already, but being that close and the annexation would just make that more official, that relationship stronger. You know, from the standpoint of, you know, our operation of being able, you know, referencing, you know, what we can help contribute and bring to town, I think is probably the biggest reason, you know, for that. I think our, you know, from tax dollars to, you know, what we'll be able to bring to town for, you know, different, different situations to improve the welfare of town, I think is an important thing to emphasize there, you know, for that question, so. I hope, it wasn't super clean, but I hope that's enough.
I think you handled it.
Okay. Are we good over there? Thumbs up? Okay.
Appreciate it. Thanks, buddy. Any other questions for Mr. Chatham? All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none at this point, I will recess the public hearing, and then we will pick up the normal town council meeting at 7:00. So, hang out for a few minutes. If anyone needs to, you can turn off the microphones. If anyone needs to use a restroom or anything, we've got restrooms there. If anyone needs a bottle of water, we'll give you a bottle of water, so hang out for a few minutes.[1144.48]
Okay, now we're back in session for the town council meeting. We've already worked through our public hearing and now we are going to work on the rest of our agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda. Did everyone have a chance to read through the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Sorry, I'll bring up our agenda for all of you here in attendance. We've gone through the consent agenda. All right, so we'll move right on to reports and I'll go first. Want to make sure that everyone knows that we don't have a work session the first week in April. We're actually having a special meeting on April 9th, which is the following week. And we have a similar agenda to this meeting, minus a couple of things. So it should be a heavy meeting as well as the April 15th one. We'll be finishing up a lot of the business that we're trying to start tonight. And just a point of clarification for when we do get to some of the other topics tonight, specifically regarding the school. We have, I made the decision that we're not going to accept public comment tonight. We've already taken tons of public comment. We've already received many, many emails on either side of the topic. And I just think with a heavy agenda like we have, we're going to bypass the public comment period. Not to say that, you know, we haven't heard what you've already said in previous meetings. We're taking all that into consideration, but I'm just trying to keep things as tight as we possibly can tonight. So, sorry if I'm disappointing anybody with that, but in an effort to keep things moving along, that's what the plan is. All the other things, obviously, will take as much public comment as necessary. With that being said, Madam Clerk, Treasure, can you do your report?
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know that we have scheduled our budget meetings for fiscal year 2026 and the closeout of fiscal year 2025, which ends on June 30th. And so those meetings are Wednesday, April 9th, Wednesday, April 23rd, and Wednesday, April 30th at 3:00 PM. So please, everybody who's interested in hearing about our budget and watching those deliberations are welcome to join us.
And they will be here in these chambers and we will also record them. So they'll be on our YouTube channel. Is that all you have?
That's it.
Okay. Next, we'll do the engineering report. Kevin, did you want to do that real quick?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah.
Keep it, keep it tight.
Radio re-project, we've got the submittals on that. We've got a few more items that they need to resubmit on. We're working into a pre-construction meeting so we can get that and they can get out to the townsfolk and start scheduling times that they can get the meters put in. So that's the direction we're working on. Craig's going to get the meter lengths to Ryan and make sure they're all correct. Development and reviews, we've worked on the dead horse fabrication shop a little bit. So they've got a little, they've got a lot of questions that we have to get on, back on that. So we sent that list to them and then we'll get ERU prices for that, for the permitting on the sewer side.
Got it.
Let's see, the water rate recommendations and the sewer rates, where we've been working on that. We're building a spreadsheet that you can basically plug in and you can work up the rates as you want to, trying to get to the number that you need to get to, to cover all the costs. So that way, it's kind of a plug and play as you want to go.
That's great.
And we'll give you our recommendations, but you can work from there. On the water permitting side, we sent all the applications in for the state engineering office and they've received those. So they're going to be going through all the paperwork at that point. Basically, we increased the area for all the area that the town might get into to serve water, including the north side of the snake. So we've got all that turned in now. We're waiting on some public request for some, the state, and then it will jump into the DEQ permitting from there. So we expect this summer to have all the permits done for the state engineering office and then we'll decide at that point for the DEQ when we get the water study back from Sunrise, when we want to push that through. As far as the pre-treatment plant goes, we've got a roof leak up there around the roof hatch. The general contractor's been notified. It's in a couple of different spots. He said he went up there or he was going to look at it as soon as the snow got off and then try and assess what he can do from there. We talked about pulling some sheet rock off to make sure there's no moisture up in the roof. Hopefully, it just went right down and kind of followed the trough down. So there's nothing with that.
Is there a solution that we can insulate that door somehow, that roof hatch?
I think it's more of a flashing, flashing and waterproofing.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So this is not unusual for a plant like this to have a metal roof like that.
He's willing to take care of it and yeah, I think there'll be a solution, but we just need the snow to go away.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, for just efficiency, it'd be nice to have some blueboard up there and to help not melt the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, right now, we're waiting on pieces and parts that are coming in right now so we can go ahead and get started the end of this month again, kind of get up and running and try and finish out the plant. We've had a meeting yesterday, had another one today, two today, we'll have another one tomorrow, trying to make sure we've got all the pieces, parts, and there's no delays and everybody's ready to rock and roll, so.
Thanks for everything you're doing on that. I cannot wait for it to be done.
Us too.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin?
No, thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. Next, we have planning and zoning.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Last planning and zoning meeting, we actually had a really good discussion on some items regarding land use development code. One little agenda that we wanted to add to it. Nowhere in the land use development does it talk about where we're going to take a height measurement from. So we had a discussion, we presented that to you. I think that you guys can totally understand why.
Did it get integrated into the packet today?
Exactly. It's into the packet. We had a really great discussion with Brad Bennett, who will be our, he's the lead for the new-
Design Review.
Design Review Committee. We talked about all of their mission statement, what they are really trying to review, what the design requirements are for houses, building, not, not so houses, but for commercial buildings and apartment buildings. What they're looking for is different faceted shapes. So it's not just a square rectangle building. It's, it's got some, some feel to it. We all thought that they had done a really good job. We also discussed, I did place a phone call to Joyce Ross from Lower Valley for Lakeview Estates. Her recommendation is that we allow them to stake out the property. She'd like to meet with herself, the contractor, DJ, the building inspector, and Christine. That way, they're all standing there. The Lower Valley will be able to tell them what they can and what they cannot do.
Okay.
That way, they can move forward. That way, everybody knows.
It's a good idea.
So, other than that, you got any questions for me? Perfect.
We should mention, did, were you guys, I don't know if you discussed it, going to just one meeting a month? Is that, how is that accepted?
Well, if we have as much work that's going to be done with the master plan, I don't know if we have enough time on one meeting a month to do that. I, you know, I mean, on a budgetary line, I don't know, I can kind of understand it, but I think that process alone is going to take just the board that you set up with us trying to manage what the zoning is going to look like and how the land use development code works with that. I think there's a lot of work there, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
But, you know, let's just take it on a wait-and-see basis.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe it makes sense to, when, when we looked at the process of taking in building permits and our new processes with the building instructor, it just didn't make sense to have two meetings a month.
Correct.
Maybe it, you could schedule special meetings or whatever for, for this. In general, we thought just going to one meeting a month would be advantageous for you or not necessary for two.
And I think that also with the land use development code and/or master plan, I think that the special work sessions that we've had with your table, that we can all bounce ideas off of what the council says, is, has been really helpful to us.
Right.
I, I think that that's a useful piece for land use development or, or planning and zoning for whatever, even for yourselves to bounce ideas.
I think what we'll do is, once we're kind of getting the master plan towards the end and it's really important to work with you, we'll invite everyone together.
Correct.
We'll advertise it as a special meeting and make sure-
Correct.
-that you guys can be in attendance. So, anyways, any questions for Dan?
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Events Committee report from Councilmember Berchard. What do you got for us?
The next big event we have coming up is the Easter egg hunt on April 20th. Always a good fan favorite for the community. Mark your calendars. It's a little later this year. And then we have Mountain Days we're working on coming up in June. It's the, I think, the 20th, 21st, and 22nd. If you want to have a vendor booth, get your name in there now because it's filling up fast. Also, one thing we always try to do at Mountain Days is bring in a group that wants to do a fundraiser to run a cornhole tournament, which is a huge popular event every year. Everyone enjoys it. So if anyone has a group that would be interested in that this year, please reach out to Melody at the Towns.
And just so everyone knows, my daughter and I won the first year. So if anybody wants to take us on, you better step up and, you know, she was 13 at the time when we had this and these hot shots of lava came over and we're throwing all, she was sinking every single one. What is going on? So anyways, just saying. Thank you. Councilmember Larson, you want to do your-
Yeah, I'll actually piggyback off of-
Yeah.
-Events Committee report. I'm putting together, and a couple others are putting together, a nonprofit mixer for all the nonprofits within Star Valley. There'll be, it's a two-day deal, April 25th and 26th. April 25th, we're working with Wyoming Nonprofit Network as the education portion of it, how to attract boards, how to run a board, other topics. And then on the 26th, we'll have just an open mixer for nonprofits, their boards, their officers, those who are interested. It'll be at the Alpine Civic Center and there'll be flyers are coming soon. But, so, trying to get the nonprofits in the valley organized and the ideal outcome working with Wyoming Community Foundation is to have a similar thing to, say, Old Bills or Tin Cup Challenge in Teton County, Idaho and Wyoming, because we don't have that here. Economic Development Report, I spoke with Chief of Staff last week. They're in the works of actually putting together a board, a new board, so I'm not sure where that'll land and how long that'll take, but that's in the works. Utility Easement Update, we still have snow. Once the snow's gone, Silver Star will be up there finishing up. Alpine Travel and Tourism Board, our open application period ended last week, or Saturday on the 15th. We had a total, I believe, of 15 applications. Our first meeting will be the 25th of this month. We'll be going over the applications, doing other housekeeping. If you want to come, that'll be here on the 25th at 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Yeah.
See, we have, the Sheriff's Report was submitted. If anyone wants to go look at that, you can go to our website. With that being said, we'll move right into our action items. I would entertain a motion for ordinance number 2025-003.
I move to make a motion to approve on first reading, ordinance number 2025-003, Snake River Junction Annexation.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion? So, Madam Clerk, we have satisfied our statutory requirement of having a public meeting that was earlier today. Did we satisfy all of our requirements?
Correct. However, it's for Town Council. Did it decide?
Oh, it is? Okay. We'll decide, I guess. Anything in particular that we should know about this ordinance, the way it was written or anything? This is pretty standard for-
No, it is. There, there is, in reading through the annexation reports, there, there is some specific items in there that are with the RV park that you just need to note. We do believe there may need to be a very small annexation agreement about parking. It's not a big issue, but it's one that from, there's some discrepancy between Town of Alpine versus what it could have done in the county and, and we think we can clear that up pretty easily within annexation agreement. So I'm working on that and we'll have it for you on the 9th. But other than that, it's all good.
Gotcha.
It's, it's been very clean.
Did everyone have a chance to read through it? It's pretty standard. Any questions, comments about this on first reading?
All the boxes were checked.
Yep. None?
No.
All right. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor of ordinance number 2025-003 on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Ordinance carried on first reading. Let's move on. Next, we have the third reading of the Land Use Development Code. Do we have a motion?
I move a mo, I move to make a motion to approve third reading of ordinance number 2024-009, Land Use and Development Code.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion. Madam Clerk, at this point, do you have the final revisions that were made? Do we have a list of them or can you just tell us really quickly what the last few adjustments were?
Yeah, and so the newest adjustments, Dan, you might have to help me, was the height restriction. You guys-
Where to measure from?
Yeah, where to measure from, but there was one added the other day. What was that?
It was the decks affidavit for decks.
Yes. So some decks are going to require a permit. However, it's going to be determined by their height from the ground.
30 inches or below.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and if they're attached to a house.
Yes.
Because of the life safety issue of steps, they're going to have to be looked at per code. And it's the attachment to the house. And it's the attachment to the house. If somebody was standing on the deck, it was only attached by a few screws and it started to move, somebody could, you know, somebody could get hurt.
Yep.
So, that's the sole reason for it. The issue is very easy to determine for height. What we've decided to do is not from the crown of the road, but from the edge of the road surface, we are allowing you on a flat site to give you a 2% grade for your driveway, which is ADA. Once you have that formula and distance, you'll be able to determine what the height of your house is, because the stairs, steps leading into your house will give you a subfloor elevation and then you'll be able to see the top of your roof pitch.
Okay.
So.
And you went over it at your last meeting and everyone's on board with those changes?
You bet. Easy to see.
Okay. And Mo's happy with the deck affidavit, the way we wrote it?
Now that it's rewritten a little bit more appropriately, yes.
Okay, good. That was the one I was worried about.
And so?
As long as Mo's happy, I'm happy.
We're always worried about Mo.
Yeah.
There was, there was some additions to the land use development code to incorporate the new design review committee.
Right.
And their guidelines, just to reference that, to tie that in once an ordinance is passed for that. There was also some minor language changes to allow for the issuance of a special use permit through the land use development code, which you guys are also working through adopting by ordinance. And all the flow charts were heavily updated.
Right.
So.
And you spent a lot of time on that?
Yes, and Sarah spent a lot of time actually doing it.
Yeah, and the whole group?
Yes.
Discussed it, so.
Yeah, there was four of us working on updates to land use development code for a few days last week.
Yeah. Appreciate you pulling the team, pulling it all together.
They did a great job. Everybody just did what needed to be done to get it done.
Yep. I'm so glad we have it now. I feel the most comfortable I've been in, it's taken us a year, the first reading was, what, like?
I don't even, I don't even remember.
Last year. I can't remember, but it's been a long time getting here, so. Does anyone have any specific questions regarding?
My only question, and this probably will relate more to building and development fee schedule, but in the LUDC, does it mention that planning and zoning will continue to review plans, not the third-party inspector?
We took that out. So, yeah. The process of them coming to planning and zoning and looking through all the plans, that's out now. So that's all outsourced to a third party.
So, there's a difference. There's a site plan review, which will be done by planning and zoning. There is a building plan review, which will be done by a building inspector.
But does he know our LUDC as well as Dan and Mo?
That's why planning and zoning is looking at the site plan, because they do.
So what they'll do for, if someone comes with a residential property, the site plan, they have to adhere to, you know, setbacks and things of that nature and make sure, planning and zoning will make sure the zoning is proper for the building, but no longer are they going to have the responsibility of sitting here leafing through all the plans and making sure that everyone has everything on there that's being outsourced to a third party and someone that's, you know, qualified and has been vetted by everyone, so hopefully that answers your question.
It makes me a little nervous, but I guess we can revisit it. I mean, I'm not, I want the third reading to go through, but if we feel like the arm's length isn't working, that planning and zoning needs more hands-on.
So you want them to look at the actual structure?
Yes. I guess that would, does that not play into?
Well, see, the thing is, these people are appointed and we're lucky enough to have Dan on the committee.
We're very lucky.
Someone that actually knows what that means, but that doesn't say, in the future, you're not, I mean.
That you won't always have a builder on planning and zoning.
Exactly, and actually, it takes a lot of responsibility and, I don't know, Dan can speak to this, but it's almost like a liability for them to make some judgment on something that they may not be qualified to do. So outsourcing it takes all that liability away from the town, really, and planning and zoning for that, and they won't have to have three-hour meetings into the night, you know, leafing through plans. That's kind of the thought behind it. Dan, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, so Shay, I'm sorry, Councilman Shay, Councilwoman Shay. I'll get it right sooner or later. The liability for me is huge when I got a page through those plans and start to find the mistakes or find what's missing. I think what's important is that planning and zoning still reviews the land use development code, because that's what we know.
Right.
It's memorized, we're memorizing it. It's going through every bit of that.
Okay.
The building inspector isn't going to do that. That's our job.
Okay.
Right? So when we get a, you know, if it's a site plan or whatever, we're going to look at it and we're going to check the zoning, we're going to check to see, you know, what the street accesses are and what the setbacks are. We're going to do all of that still.
Okay.
But Mayor Green's correct, there is liability, especially on my end, because I'm out there doing that. I don't need to be concrewed that I messed something up on somebody's plan here. Does that make sense?
Yep, that makes sense. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other questions? Is everyone comfortable with the changes that we made?
Yes.
The last-minute changes? Sorry for all the last-minute changes, but I finally feel like we were at a point where we're comfortable with this on third reading and if you have any questions, now's the time, so.
We feel like the flow charts, you're now comfortable with working with Christine and you have all of those, because they looked corrupted on my end, but I know you went through multiple.
Yeah, and I haven't reviewed them a final time myself. Christine was working with her to finalize that. We had a meeting with all of us internally and went through and lined out exactly what they should say, so I trust that that was all cleared up.
Okay.
I'm sure she took care of it. So, that was a lot of work, this flow chart.
Yeah, it has been.
And thank you to planning and zoning for that push.
Yes.
So that we would be prepped for building season.
Yes.
Yep, that's the goal, is to have this all done as soon as possible, so. Any other comments?
Let her go.
All right, with that being said, all those in favor of ordinance number 2024-009 Land Use and Development Code on third reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Ordinance carried on third reading?
Yay.
So, yay. Next, we're going to move on to the school discussion. Point of clarification, Mr. Sanderson, should we have the presentation first from these guys and then see if we want to put on the?
Go ahead.
Okay, that sounds good to me. We'll go ahead and let you guys take over and you do your presentation. So, Kelly, you could bring that chair over too if you want, sit there. We don't want you to.
I know, I feel.
I know. It's right here.
All right, so, everyone in attendance, thank you for coming. We wanted to invite the charter board to come and make a presentation in light of some of the new discussions that have been taking place recently, and they've been nice enough to bring a presentation and share it with us. So Meredith, I'll let you take the, if you don't mind, turn on the microphone, there you go, and you might need to point that microphone towards, there you go.
It's red. Is it on?
Yeah, you're good.
Great. Mayor Green, council members of Alpine, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to present. Before we really get started, I wanted you to just consider what is downstream from this meeting. If the resolution doesn't pass, the status quo remains and there's no school in Alpine. But I'd like you to consider the things we don't know. We don't know the talented professionals that a world-class school will attract. We don't know what business opportunities a world-class school will attract. We don't know what families will do with the added family time they have together instead of spending that time on a bus or in a car. We don't know what kind of community it will build to have students educated in the arts, history, and fundamental values that have shaped great civilizations. We can only imagine what can happen in Alpine based on the benefits we've seen schools bring to other communities. The opportunity we will present tonight, this evening, gives us the chance to know what a school will do for Alpine.
So right off the bat, we wanted to just go ahead and give introduction. There's been a lot of questions as to who's on the board, what we do, what we're all about, so we'll just kind of go around and just raise our hands. I'm Meredith Leonard, I'm a resident of Etna. I have two young children and I work in operations and design. Luke Astle here is a father and he's a finance director. Dominique, I don't think she's here tonight, but she's a mother and works for the Forest Service.
And Luke lives in Alpine?
Yes. I will.
And so does Dominique.
And so does Dominique.
Yes.
I will emphasize, the foundation board is separate from the school board, we're an independent entity, and then the structure of how each board works is a little bit different, but the charter school board, which we'll introduce next, operates like a school board would. We are seeking two members to add to the foundation board, so if anyone's interested. I will emphasize, the time commitment hopefully isn't too big of a deal. It's been really fun. Great. The school board, so this is the Alpine Charter School Board. We have Dave Jenkins, he's an Alpine resident and a business owner. Kelly Shackelford is an Alpine resident, mother and realtor. Melinda Dorian is an Alpine resident, mother and business owner. Dave Burchard is an Alpine resident, father, IT professional and search and rescue volunteer. Don't outdo us too much, Dave. And then we have Amy Weirda, who's an Alpine resident, mother, and she also works as well. And if you have any questions, by all means, feel free to grab one of us. We'd be happy to sit down and chat with you or take you to coffee. We meet, the boards meet the second Thursday of every month. Anyone is welcome to join or ask questions. We ask that only positively interested parents or community members show up to those meetings. We want to keep them positive and moving forward. So the school board meets at 6:00 and the foundation board meets at 7:00 at the Cobblestone Inn in Alpine. And then we do have an informational website there listed below where you can find all information about upcoming meetings and progression on the school. Great, so Dave's going to get a little bit further into the opportunity that we're presenting tonight, but we did just want to touch on our mission and our vision as well. That hasn't changed from the very beginning, from the very genesis of this. So, partner with the Town of Alpine to provide a state-of-the-art education to the children of Alpine and surrounding areas. Our vision, a beautiful school and a beautiful town that will create a complete community for a thriving Alpine. So Dave is going to expand on this a little bit further, but the opportunity that we have is absolutely impossible to state how big this is. So, a school in Teton County, Wyoming has basically built a brand-new school and they are now selling their modular buildings that you can see lined up there. We have the opportunity to purchase these, we've made movement on them and we owe them an answer fast. These modulators are completely turn-key, no concrete foundations are required, they're fully equipped classrooms. We have a couple more images coming down a little further. Minimal infrastructure is required in terms of parking lot. You can kind of see there, it's low impact on the land. They're fully functional with HVAC, everything that they need, windows, and then they do meet the structural and environmental requirements that are required here in Wyoming. So, basically, what we are proposing is that we move these modular units to town land, and we'll show a little bit more about what that would look like, with very minimal impact on the land, only improvements, and I'll let Dave get into that a little bit further. Thank you.
Mayor, council, thanks for having us tonight. Anyway, this is amazing that we're here at this point. This has been, what a journey, you know? And to get this thing approved, there was a lot of people involved, they got it to this, to get our school even where we, at this point, and then this became, the next miracle was like, so we heard you guys, the last, I mean, we didn't, the council didn't want to encumber the next council, they didn't want to, they wanted to make sure they didn't have a permanent, like, any kind of liability on the land as far as, you know, like, what if it doesn't work? What are we going to do if there's a debt on the property? So we heard you about that. This opportunity came up, I'm like, this kind of fits that bill. It does, and we're like, well, we can make a five-year lease, there's no encumbering the town resources for a long time. It also gives a chance, we're asking for a chance to make this happen. I mean, we've worked hard for two years. Some things that, you know, people ask, like, what's in it for you guys? I'm going to tell you, like, there is nothing in it for us. We've been working our tails off, we're tired, there's no, like, money that's coming our way or anything like that. It's just been, you know, my example is this, I grew up here, I love this town, I rode that bus for 13 years, my son rode that bus for 13 years, and I'm, by God, my grandkids are not going to do it. You know, that's, I'm done. And, you know, I know this is not the perfect, like, we want a beautiful, amazing building, we want this amazing facility, we got to start somewhere, guys. And, you know, the other thing we thought that we met when we made the idea with the five-year lease was like, you know, the airpark flight path, this gives them time to help us figure out where to go next. So that was our idea with making the accommodations with the airpark so that they could, you know, if it's in a way of a concern of the FAA, we could work with them and move us somewhere else. But this is, we need to get started, we need to get, you know, some kids in, and just see if it's going to work and, and this is the only way we're going to know is to try and there's like, I think there's no risk really for this town to do this. Anyway, we have a short amount of time. These guys, they want them gone in June, they want to know in a couple days if we're going to make the deal with them, and it's not, even if you guys say yes, it's still hard. But we're determined to make it happen, I'm determined to, I'm committed to it. I know, is there, I mean, I wanted to ask the audience tonight, who wants a school here? All right. Thank you. All right. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you for coming. We can go to the next slide. So we put together just some pictures of these things for you guys to see. So this is, I mean, recent, obviously we've got snow pictures, so you can kind of, I mean, they're not super attractive, go ahead and keep going through, but the insides look like a school. They're, I mean, they're set up, they have the intercom system, they have the bell system, they have everything we need to get started. We'll get some of the furniture, they're going to keep some of the stuff too. So relatively easy for us to get up and running, get kids in the seats, and you can keep going to the next one. We just put together a quick, like, just a schematic of what this would look like if, I mean, a possibility, obviously we would work with the mayor and the council of where they wanted to put these things, but this is like an idea of a part of the land that we're not using. It's, you know, close to the ball field, but we don't mess up the ball field, we don't mess up the skate park, and we would just, you know, basically set them up, get this thing going, and anyway, that's just an idea to give us a start to work with you guys on location.
Just to add to this, you know, I think it's important that the community knows that we heard them loud and clear on some of the things. You know, we felt this worked really nicely to allow the Child Development Center to expand, potentially share a parking lot, you know, we can certainly contribute to how that would look. We're staying off Buffalo Run, you know, those new homes that aren't shown on that plan, but really just trying to consolidate traffic onto essentially vacant land, you know, not shown on here are the big, beautiful trees that we're going to plant and all that wonderful stuff, so.
You being a landscaper.
I'm. I can go to the next one, I think. So, why now? I mean, now we have a, we have a, we have a contract with the state of Wyoming, which is difficult to get, that's done. We have this school structure opportunity with the, you know, APA is willing to help us, we have a low-cost way to get started, I mean, basically. I mean, basically, if the town works with us on the land lease, we have the modular option locked up, ready to go. And this can happen, we can, this is a real, like, I mean, it is in this town's town council and mayor, you guys are, I mean, this is your fate, it's put in your lap. Our board's tired. We need the town to partner with us. And we're willing to work with you. We're willing to work with the airpark, we're willing to work with, and just say, hey, let's make this happen together. So, what else have I got for you guys? Let's go to the next one, I think. The risks in the land, I mean, we lose these modulators, I don't know how we're gonna do it. We don't have, our board doesn't have any money. We're just, we're basically, you know, shoestring to get to this point. And there's other interested parties for these modulators. If we were to buy these new, it would, it would take, it would cost more than twice as much. And so, this is a great opportunity for that. And also, you know, the town land's what everybody wants. I mean, we have local donors that would participate being on the town land. They don't want it to be outside of town. We have, anyway, without the step, we're kind of at the point, like, we want to know, hey, we have your support, we do this together. You know, are you with us or not? That's kind of what we're saying to the town council and mayor tonight. Show us that your support. These people voted for you. I want them to know that, you know, where you guys stand and how this affects them. Because these guys have babies, they have kids, they want, they want this to happen. Anyway, I think, next slide. Okay, I'm gonna let Luke talk about the financial, just so there's some new developments there. So, we'll let you guys.
Thanks, Dave. Council members and mayor of Alpine, appreciate your time tonight. But, I just wanted to talk some numbers, because we just want to make sure that what we have to believe for this to be a success is attainable. So, kind of coming in, I'm a little bit newer to the board, I would say, but definitely wanted to get involved, kind of jumping in. I had the questions, like, what needs to be true? I don't have a whole lot of history in running schools or the cost to run a school, but I think the great news is, we got a partner that has over 20 years' experience in that matter. So, working with APA, they were gracious enough to provide us with some insight into some financials. They shared with us some comparable financials for a school that they helped run that has about 200 students, which I think is probably a bit more than where we anticipate starting. But, I think it gives us a conservative approach in terms of what the total cost might be from an operating expense standpoint. And from there, just layered in some of the assumptions that we have from a Wyoming standpoint. So, namely, like, thinking about the average daily membership funding, so that ADM funding, that's the funding that's, you know, follows the student around from school to school. And that $13,600 would come through per student. So, when we factor that into some of the financials, again, like, looking at a 200-student count expense income statement, we're projecting about 100 to 120 students is what would be needed for a break-even for this school. Additionally, just kind of more anecdotally, as we think about the expense for the modulators themselves, we expect about $1 million for the modulators, a couple hundred thousand dollars potentially to get them moved down and placed on the land. And then, I think this is where the opportunity, aside from just having, you know, this school in town, is this land improvement that is on town land that town, I think, will really benefit from at the end of this lease. You know, when the time for lease renegotiation comes up, about a $400,000 land improvement that, you know, we'll be leaving with water, sewer and power, all on the land that wasn't there before. And, you know, I think it'll be something that the town will be, will be happy with. Go to the next slide. Oh, you can go up one more, sorry, I think we skipped one. Yeah, there we go. So, just some details on the lease with the state. We're estimating about $300,000 in lease reimbursement from the state, and that's based off of square footage and enrollment. I think we should make it clear, and this is one of the reasons why there are two boards, like, just to, you know, clarify for the town and the people listening in tonight. The foundation board is really more over the land in the school. The school can, or the land in the structure. The school cannot own the building, and that's how we are able to collect a lease from the state. So, that's really the division, and that's why that's, like, why that's important for us to have two boards, and hopefully that helps provide some clarity to those in the audience tonight. That enrollment, or, excuse me, the lease does not include any maintenance, routine maintenance or anything else. But, again, also, you know, with the lease payment enrollment assumptions, you know, the student enrollment aligns with that kind of the bucketing where we look at that 100-student mark in an enrollment. So, from there, my next thought was like, okay, well, now we understand what it costs to run the school and how many students we're gonna need. What does the population of students in the area look like and what would need to be believed for that to be a success? So, last year, Lincoln County School District Number Two provided us with some insight around, you know, the students by population, by township. And from there, it kind of just gleaned some information of the kids by grade, and this was for last year. So, from here, you know, just kind of looked at some of the immediate surrounding townships, Alpine, Freedom and Etna. You'll notice there's two sections for that with a blue highlight on the table. But, that first one, again, just includes Alpine, Freedom and Etna. You might notice that on Freedom and Etna, for the kids in grades four, five and six, it all shows zero. There are obviously kids in grades four, five and six, but for the assumptions here and what we consider population to be potential students in this school, I didn't think that it made sense for somebody that had their kid attending Etna Elementary through those grades to, you know, come on over to Alpine. So, we just excluded them altogether. And then, from there, we looked to say, okay, well, we know that, you know, there's some biases potentially towards, you know, wanting to go towards Lincoln County School District or maybe, you know, Alpine School doesn't make sense for them logistically, whatever it might make sense. So, we didn't want to assume 100% of those. So, you'll see, just kind of footnoted here, but I'll speak to it. And the next table, just down below it, Alpine, we are assuming 50% of those students, you know, might want to attend the school. So, that gets you to 73 students there. And then, Freedom and Etna, at 30% of those students, that gets us to 112 students, which is right in the sweet spot in what we think we would need to be to make this feasible from a financial standpoint. The next couple tables on this just include Star Valley Ranch with those same assumptions with the Etna Elementary and the 30% capture rate there. And if we look at that, that puts us well above what we would need to be to be at a break-even at 136 students. So, I know that we still have an enrollment study that we're planning to do, but hopefully this kind of helps people make it feel a little more palpable and achievable for us to be able to make this school a success based on the students that are in the area. Also note, this doesn't account for any families that are maybe currently homeschooling, because they don't, you know, prefer to put their kids on the bus. So, I think there's a subset of population here that hasn't been captured that we could, you know, hopefully bring into the school as well.
So, just to understand, 136 students is where your break-even?
No, that's well, that's well above. We're closer to, you know, 100 to 120 students. And the reason for that range from 100 to 120 is that we know that some of the financials that we've got are based on a 200-student count expenses. I think that could be lower, but if we kind of earmarked off that higher expense and that ADM of 13,600, we could be closer to the 120. But, if some of those expenses on the P and L come a little bit lower, because we don't expect 200 students, I think we could be closer on the 100 range. So, at 136, I think we could be set up for, you know, for, you know, continued success. And I think we're even successful at the 112 to, you know, 120. But, I think going back to kind of conversations that we've had earlier in this presentation is just, are the modulators exactly maybe what we all dreamed of and hoped of for our town? Maybe not necessarily the first thing that comes to mind, but I think that with success of this school and this low-cost option, it sets us up for something that we can really be proud of as a town. And we can build something, you know, with the partnership of the town, with this low-cost option, being able to utilize the town land, that we can build something in the future that we can all be really proud of. But, I think this modular solution also provides a great solution in the short term. Can go to the next slide. So, here's just a little breakdown of the timeline. Now, obviously, the first line here is just the lease negotiation. So, you know, we're asking the town for a yes vote on this. And, you know, once that yes vote comes through, we'll enter active lease negotiations. But, at that same time, there's gonna be a lot of things happening concurrently that you'll see in each one of these lines. So, like I mentioned before, we'll continue that enrollment study. We'll be facilitating answering questions from parents, conducting traffic studies. And then, from there, you know, I think it'll be important, you know, Dave said, you know, there's just a few of us kind of working together and to make this happen, we'll be actively fundraising. And I think that it's important to get the community involved, so that way we can make this a reality. From an operation standpoint, we'll be looking to hire teachers and staffing, site planning. And then, you know, for any potential interest from the community, you know, even potentially coordinating APA school tours and the schools in Utah, just to kind of get an idea of what that looks like. I think everyone that's attended one of those has been very pleased with the quality and the output and, you know, just the engagement in those schools. So, ultimately, working towards, you know, an open date of fall 2026 per our charter agreement with the state. But, a lot of stuff to happen between now and then, but I think with the yes vote tonight, we can make this all a reality.
So, just some closing remarks. Opportunities are like sunrises. If you wait too long, you'll miss them. So, it's time for the town to jump on board with the school. We want to partner with the town. We want to stand by each other in our community and fight for what our town deserves. You know, you guys are elected officials. This is the, the vote is in your hands. I notice a lot of pressure for you guys and, you know, but I want you to think about all the, there's not really a negative thing. This is gonna be for kids. This is, this is the opportunity you have. You have it right in front of you, a chance for kids, a chance for our community to be a community. We don't have to drive to Afton to watch our kids play. We don't have to, I mean, it's not okay for your kids to go to school in Afton and you have to work in Jackson. Then, you get home from working in Jackson and you gotta go to an event in Afton. And you gotta come back from Afton and you're exhausted. I mean, that's a long day for you guys as parents. I know, you know? I didn't work in Jackson, but I know people that did. It's not okay for your kindergarten or first, second, third graders to drive the bus two hours a day. It's not okay. We're done with that. Anyway, the opportunity's here, guys. This is, this is yours to lose and we've done our work to get here. We brought it to here, it's time for you to partner with us. And again, we're willing to work with all the problems. I know you have some other pressures from other people that, you know, but I think we can work together with everybody in the airpark. I think they can help us. I think we can work together with the town. I think the vote tonight needs to be a yes. And I think the people here deserve that. I think the town deserves that. And that's all I'm asking. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all you do.
So, appreciate all the time that you guys have put into that. I know it's, you put countless hours in over a year ago when this first all came. We have Senator Doxter here as well, all the work that he did. So, thank you to everyone that's been working on this for quite a long time. I think the best thing to do right now is see if we can get a resolution on the table and then we can further the discussion.
I move to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-009, a resolution to proceed a negotiation of lease with Alpine Education Foundation.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. I'll start real quick. I just wanted to, again, full disclosure, Dave Jenkins and I are friends. We had the opportunity to hang out two weekends ago, whatever, and he told me, I've known about the temporary buildings as an option. And at that point, he stressed how time-critical it was. And, of course, we've been working together for over a year on this, so I'm very well in tune to, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support you. And that's why I brought this, this resolution kind of last minute and put it on this meeting. So, I apologize to the town council for kind of blindsiding you, but the timing was critical because of your deadline for April 1st, and this would have been the only meeting that we had. So, I agree with everything that you've said. I mean, the kids, it benefits the town, it benefits the region, all that stuff. And so, I applaud you for definitely all the work that you've done. So, at this point, is there questions regarding the presentation that they just made that you guys would like to, okay? Anyone want to start? And then, I think what we'll do is we'll ask you guys some questions, if that's fine. And then, we'll have some back and forth and then, we'll kind of finish up with our thoughts. Again, I'll reiterate, we have received so much feedback from the public. So, thank you so much for and against, and we hear you. We've heard your public comments for the last year on the record here in person. And so, there's no doubt that everyone is super passionate about this. And we're happy to bring this forward at this time. So, anyways, any questions? Let's open it up to Dave and the rest of the group. Anyone want to start?
I can start.
Yeah.
Jeremy, he's almost ready. Okay, so, since I've been here since the beginning, Alpine Public Education Committee, I've run for school board. I just want you to know, I've had two kids through the entire system. I'm very, very familiar with it. I worked at Etna Elementary for a year, I've been on the PTO for over a decade. So, as we go through, a couple of my questions. I was wondering, when we first were presented, the foundation board had Mike Mueller, Rob Hagadorn, and I believe Jeremy. So, I was wondering what happened to those members? Because I see two glaring empty spots and I would have hoped after nine months, we would have had those filled. So, that's my first question. Secondarily, I sat on the entire four-hour Zoom when the state charter board approved the school. And I'm trying to figure out, one of their conditions was a public educator or two. So, I don't see those names as well. So, that's a concern on both those fronts. And I guess that just comes to the consistency and just some holes that still seem to be missing from all the many times we've talked. And I know it's a lot. So, you know, when we presented to the school board to make Etna K through six, we gave it our all and they shut us down. To this day, I'm still very upset about that. So, with that said, those are two of my questions. And then, also, I noticed-
Let him answer the-
Okay, okay.
So, I'll start with the first question and you might remind me about the second one.
That's okay.
But, you know, Mike Mueller was on the board. He was too busy with banking, so he had to resign from that board. Robbie Hagadorn had some family stuff going on and some other, he got busy with, yeah, please.
Please come up to the microphone, Robbie.
Robbie Hagadorn, Alpine, Wyoming, Alpine Airpark. So, I want to apply to get back on the board.
Anybody else want to get back on the board? All right. There we go. So, we have another position still open.
As far as I go, I was only there for the inception.
Oh, for the inception, okay. No worries.
That was it?
Yeah, Jeremy's there for the inception. And then, I mean, Luke and Meredith have been, I mean, Meredith's been there for a while, right? And then, Luke's been a great add to our, I mean, has the finance side to it. So, we're always, we're open for positions on that, on the foundation board and also the school board. We are looking for administrators, we just haven't found, I mean, there's a little bit of, I mean, they're a little scared to be what the public schools are gonna say for their jobs, to, I mean, so, again, anybody in the public sector that wants to apply for our board, we welcome the application, so.
What was your next question?
I guess we've never, I mean, I know we kind of chatted about it at the last couple times we've chatted. So, if you get a lease payment of $305,000 a year, how much were you looking for the land as far as a land lease?
Well, that's something that we would, thought we would negotiate with the mayor and then we would come to the council with that later on. I mean, we, some of the things we're talking about bringing you guys is a bunch of improvements, like, I mean, $400,000 in improvements?
If you kind of chalk that up over five years, the $400,000 improvements, about a $7,000 a month lease of land improvement. We were hoping, and you know, this will be part of the negotiations, that that might suffice, you know, and/or at least consider us and provide us with the same treatment that other comparable institutions in town have had in terms of lease agreements with the town, like the CDC, the library and other public assets. I think another consideration is, is something that we can discuss, but typically, you might think of a school as a place of emergency shelter. So, we think of a school, you know, this school in particular, doesn't make sense to be charging an exorbitant amount of lease to an asset that the town benefits from as well, from that capacity.
And just to add to that, any, any payment that would go to the town would be direct payment that- payment that would not be going straight to the kids in terms of supplies, resources, all of that.
And those are questions we've just been emailed. So I just want to make sure I, I address them for the families that don't have children and they're balancing, you know, this is our recreation land and that dynamic. Okay.
Did you have any other questions?
Um, I guess I'm, you know, I think we talked about it, but as far as the modulators, I know that you guys want to fundraise. Will that just be handled by the foundation board as far as you'll get, like the bank will give you a personal loan for those?
So, so we've got some different avenues out there. There's some grants out there. We've talked to the Daniels Fund. They would like us to have a land agreement and an agreement on the modulators. And then there's some money that possibly can come from that. We have some private donors that if we have a land agreement, that will come on board. We have, the bank is also working on getting us a, what we can do for the lending side based on the lease. So we're working all avenues of that and also we'll be fundraising. I mean, I think it's going to be a lot easier to fundraise once we have something, hey, this is what we're going to do here. And that's, we'll be hitting that really hard. But I mean, it's basically, we need to have a commitment from the town that, hey, we're working with you guys. We're going to get this done together. So that's where we're at. We need this, this is kind of do or die for us.
Did you have any more questions before we move down?
I don't want to hog it.
Keep, keep going. Let's just go rapid fire.
I guess my last question was, at our last meeting, we volunteered to help make phone calls to all 88 families. And we were just wondering how progress was as far as calling the 88 families in Alpine and asking them if they would enroll. Just to get, like, to get early enrollment, like a preliminary enrollment number.
Well, we wanted to go to those families and say, we have a land lease and we have a building and this is where it's going to be. And then we were going to hit that really hard after we had that in place. Because if we don't have that in place, we're pretty much going to say, guys, it's in your hands.
Okay.
Okay, I'm next. How did you come to the number of the $400,000 in infrastructure?
We don't have it broken down, but we just, you know, some parking lot, we put, I don't know, we put like 50 grand for a park. We just kind of put numbers in that are, we're in the construction, myself does that. I think we're very conservative. I think we can do it for less. I just, I put in numbers I think I felt was conservative to get it done. That's where we got the numbers from.
And the help from Meredith, who has that knowledge for sure.
Yes. Yes. Okay. So with the modulators, you mentioned that there's no concrete foundations. And I know that we're going to have our planning and zoning because I've looped them in. So what does Alpine need and what do we allow in our land use development codes? Can you just give me your brief, because you do work in construction? What does no concrete foundation mean?
So these, these modulators are in Teton County, which is one of the difficult, so these pass Teton County's inspection. There's no load is for Teton County, which is equal or equivalent. Basically what we do is we end up putting a grade down, some road base, different things, and then we level these with, they got a whole bunch of different jacks on them. These actually have structural plans. So when we'll meet with P and Z, we'll show them our structural plans and, and we'll work with them on that, so.
And just to clarify, so within the land use development code, it does not currently in the town of Alpine allow-
Temporary structure.
Temporary structures to be moved on to any, any foundation, whether it's gravel or a natural foundation. So the plan is, is if we were to pass it tonight, then we also have a special use permit that's going to pass. And in my mind, the special use permit would be what they would come and ask for us to approve the, the use of those trailers on that piece of property. So there is some red tape that we have to go through and there's other points that need to kind of, parts that need to be checked off, but it's not a real simple transition at this point.
Right. Well, that was my question, if you've met with planning and zoning, because I wasn't aware of a meeting.
No, we have not met with planning and zoning yet.
Okay. Acreage, you've now clarified as 9.4, so Elk Run would be your planned traffic road?
So that 9.4 is just the whole area? I mean, we don't have to have the whole area. We just need a place to put this parking lot and the buildings. And, and also we're, we're thinking that you guys will probably share some of our parking with maybe the CDC, maybe the, maybe the, um, um, ball field will use that. I mean, it's definitely going to be a, a town use, you know.
Would that be just gravel or would it be asphalt or something?
Our, our thought right now is gravel. That way it's not, it's not a permanent, maybe some, maybe some chip seal or some mag, you know, something like that.
Keep the dust out.
I know there was, and feel free not to speak on anything you're not comfortable with, but I know that there was recently movement on purchasing a piece of land that was outside of the town of Alpine. What happened?
Yeah. So we put the, the town, we put the 16 acres under, under contract, thinking that we would get some donors from the local community that would help us make this happen. And basically our donors wanted to be in the town of Alpine or, you know, we also reached out to the airpark and met with them, just thinking that they would be helpful to figure us out, to not be in their flight world. And that was not a success, but I mean, we've also been in touch, in touch with the airpark recently and it sounds like they're willing to maybe reach out to us and work together a little bit more too. So this could evolve, you know, as we go forward, so.
Okay. Just curious. Fire chief, have you talked to the fire chief about any of this? I know a lot of this has been happening really, really quickly, but did he have any thoughts on Elk Run? Did he have any concerns? Has he been looped into the process?
Anybody else? I have not talked to the fire, fire chief. Maybe Burchard did.
We did with our initial plan. Uh, Dave, do you mind coming up?
We were able to speak with Mike during our initial phase and there were concerns about having the road come down alongside his property. This new plan addresses that, but we haven't had an opportunity to follow up with Mike and get his approval on it. But he has been assured a place at the table to, to look at our plan as far as a fire safety avenue. And the same goes for Sheriff Chain Johnson as well. Initially gave us his endorsement, but we want to show him this plan and make sure that what we're doing is got safety in mind.
One last question, and I know that, again, this is hard. We live in a small community and we only have so many teachers to pull from. But Luke, you had mentioned when we met that you probably were looking at eight teachers. This is not a teacher aid position. This is eight full staff teachers. Is that still the number that you-
Nine, including kindergarten, K through eight. So, so that's nine. But I think just from a budgetary standpoint, we were thinking like with the enrollment, if you think about the number of students we're talking about here, if it's 120, we're talking like 10 to 13 kids per classroom.
Right.
And with that level of enrollment, is a teacher aide really like a necessity at that point?
Right.
Obviously it's something that we'd reassess as, you know, enrollment increases. We want to make sure that every kid's given the same opportunity that they get, if not more, in any other institution in the valley. So if a teacher aide is what makes sense at that time, we'd make sure to add it.
And how many local teachers have you had pledged?
Well, we don't have a school yet, but once you guys say yes, we'll work on that real quick.
Thank you. That was my last question.
Can you just clarify the enrollment study that you guys just started? I know when we met in December, we kind of said we wanted to kind of hear from you on the next time we saw you about the enrollment study and even any information on traffic study or anything like that.
Yeah. So it's been like the chicken or the egg. So for us, you know, we're like at this point in time in this, in this juncture, like we want a commitment from the town. We want the town to be on, on the, on the team. We're going to go get the kids. We're going to, whether we get 150 kids or we get 90 kids, we're going to make this work. I mean, if it's 90 kids, we're going to adjust it, adjust our expenses. I mean, if you're committed, if you're committed to make something work, it's going to work. And that's where we're at. Let Meredith step in here.
Yes. Both really good questions. We can't study traffic just anywhere, so we have to study traffic as it relates to a specific piece of land. So it's really important, but we just can't know what to study necessarily, where the traffic is going to be without knowing where the, the school's going to be. So we'll definitely address that and it's really important because I hate traffic. Then on the enrollment study, and I can speak to this, I have kids enrolled in Lincoln County School District, but the logistical benefits of having a school in Alpine are everything for me. So if we go to parents and say, hey, there's going to be a school, one of the first questions is going to be, well, where is it going to be? Because it, as we all know, it means so much for our commutes. So I'm kind of one of those parents and that's why I've been slow to roll out the enrollment study to people I know, is just because we don't have answers for them in order for them to make realistic decisions. So ultimately we were concerned that if we started the enrollment study without having all of the information, we would just get bad data and it would lead to a bad decision.
And one thing I just wanted to clarify also for your, your question on the teachers, like, I think that one thing that should be known is that from, from a budgetary standpoint and we're looking at the expenses, from a benefits package with teachers, we've budgeted the same, you know, sort of, I think it's a requirement even that it being like a public school, because that's what this is, is a public school, that those teachers follow and are, you know, offer the same benefits package and then part of the state package that's offered. So it'll be very comparable or the same versus, it will be the same package as what they have from a benefits package and the pay will be competitive, if not better, than what they've got at the Lincoln County. So I think it'll be an appealing opportunity for a lot of the, the teachers in the area and potentially even, you know, teachers that are looking to move to the area. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
Keep going down. Do you have any more questions?
A lot of my questions have been answered. One of the things that we've seen some people express concern is the master plan that's coming up. And I really feel like if we approve this tonight, your group can work with the master plan group together to make, make sure it works, you know, in conjunction with the town and the way we want to go in the future.
For sure.
I'm mostly just making statements.
Definitely would, definitely would be glad to work with the master plan and-
Yeah. I, I feel like it just really can be a good partnership.
Absolutely.
One of the other concerns is recreating and I, I feel like you're opening it up, like, nobody's going to not be able to go walk around your grounds or, you know, do things. If you end up with your own sports fields or whatever, they'll be open to the community.
Absolutely. I mean, this is, this is a community school. We're doing this for the community. So yeah, 100%.
Ultimately, one day, if we had, you know, like a nice amphitheater or something, it would benefit everybody. The question about the funding, because you keep saying we don't have any money, but I, I do understand, like, it's just comes back again and again, like, you need the land, you need the commitment so that you can make, get the funding and do the fundraising.
Yep.
So you're, you're working hard on that.
Yep. Definitely are.
Yeah. And just I want to reiterate that this is, you know, this is a jumping off point. There's still a lot of negotiating to be done. This is just a commitment to say, yes, we are going to negotiate with you for this piece of property. And I know there's a lot of concerns with the community and I think it can all be worked out. I think we can, we can all work together to find the best solution for all the concerns.
Absolutely.
That is all.
Councilman Larson, do you have any questions for the, the team?
Thanks for all the hard work and the commitment to keep it going. As far as my only question, that was kind of the main thing is, is one, just to reiterate that it's a community school, open to the community. It's not fenced off and locked afterwards and nobody can use it. What, I guess what roadblocks besides town have you come across and what are you, how are you working towards them?
So our first roadblock is, is getting some land in the building. So the next, the next step after, if you guys approve it tonight, tomorrow, we're hitting it hard as far as the funding. So that's going to be our next roadblock. We're going to be hitting everybody up for donations. And we welcome that very much and time and whatever you can help us with. It's, that's going to be the next challenge. This is one hurdle we have. The, the funding is a big hurdle too. We think we can overcome that, but we, we think this is the next step so we can get to the funding problem. Other than that, I mean, then we got the enrollment study, that's going to be the next step. And then we got teachers to hire. It's going to be, I mean, all these things, we're, we're here. It was, it's amazing that we're here. It's a miracle that we're here. But I'm going to tell you, day one, our school will not be perfect. Day two, you know, year two, it won't be perfect. I'm going to tell you, we will make it better every year and it will become a school for this town. It won't be, this is not going to be a right wing school or a left wing school or a religious school. This is going to be a, an American school for kids. That's going to be a great education, something that we're proud of and something that we're going to, I mean, these kids are going to perform at a high level here. And that's, that's where we're, we're going.
Is that your only question? Okay. I wanted to bring to light and also make sure that we have it in the record. Since we put this on the agenda, we have received, I don't know how to describe it, Mr. Sanderson, but a letter from the airpark.
A threat.
A threat from the airpark.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Thank you very much.
Might be described as a threat. You, you've had some discussions with them. Could you just give a quick synopsis of the letter you received and what potentially could happen?
Basically, the letter was addressed to the Alpine Air Park Association from a firm out of Washington DC that handles airplane, airplane law. And they are saying that the proposed location is within their unpublished flight path. I've also received information they've made at least several million dollars of investment on equipment at the airport for instrument landings. And if we put the school here, that's going to cause problems. But the long and short of it is that, and I received this information today, that if, if we go into this, they will sue us. They will file the suit tomorrow. So I'm not trying to blame you, Dave. When you say working with the airpark, it doesn't sound like we're working with the airpark. So-
I'm saying I'm willing to open the door to the airpark.
Well, you can open the door all you want, but this is what they're threatening. So I don't think, and based on the limited knowledge I know about airplane law, but there is planning and zoning in this. They're talking about an unpublished flight path. They're talking about the FAA doesn't, it just gives guidance, it really doesn't regulate it. I don't know that they have a lot of merit to their case. But in the last two years, I've been involved in two cases where the other side had zero merit and my clients, at my Star Valley rate, spent well over $100,000. So what you would be asking us to do is approve this tonight and with the threat that they're having of filing a lawsuit tomorrow, we will have to go get counsel to defend us in this lawsuit. They'll also join your organization in this lawsuit. And I don't think personally that that's the best way of spending our funds trying to defend a lawsuit. So take that into consideration.
You know, in, in my opinion, I mean, for us as a town to roll over when anybody threatens us with a lawsuit, I think sometimes we've got to stand up for what's right.
Who's going to pay the bill? That's the question, is who's going to pay the bill?
Robbie, you want to speak?
Well, okay. That's these guys to decide.
Well, and we're hoping that, that, that the airpark are going to be our friends. I mean, I know that the letter is threatening. I don't think they, I think they probably would like to read, read, rescind their letter is my guess. And I'm guessing they'd want to help us and figure out this school is what I'm assuming. And I'm, I'm going to give them some, some good faith. They've done a lot for our community over the years. I would say that they're probably going to rescind their letter of threat and come to us with a letter, like work together attitude. And that's my opinion.
Under what timeframe do you think they would do?
I bet they would do that starting pretty quick. I mean, I know there is a member from the airpark board if he wanted to speak. You guys would allow him to speak? Matt Perkins is here.
That'd be great. Hello, town of Alpine. I'm Matt Perkins. I'm on the Alpine Airport Board. You know, I think that half of the story has been represented today and I think it's fair to represent both halves. The airpark offered two things. We don't ever show up and, I don't know how many of you are business owners, or managers, or even dealing with your kids. When they come to you with a problem, what else do you hope that they also come to you with?
Solution.
A solution, exactly. So the airpark came to the board, the town, with both the problem that we see and the solution. And one of the solutions that we'd come up with, that we shared with the group, Dave been aware of it, we've been talking, has been the opportunity for us to help find a location for the school and work with the city to do a land swap to where we'll buy the property to help the school, and then swap that land back with the city so that we can have an asset to eventually sell. But it would be in the area that the city is looking to develop all these wonderful new things with the master plan. And as any city goes, they have control over their land and their master plan, so they have that say in what that land goes for in the future. So I mean, it's not that we have, the airpark itself has only desired to stand in the way, because no one at the airpark has any negative feelings about a school being built. I mean, there's an airpark member right here who wants to be on the board and was previously on the board. So I think that this vision or this delusion that the airpark is here to just put their foot on your neck is not correct at all. We're just trying to be part of the community and protect interests that are on our side, but also help you guys get what you need as well. So I think there's a lot more to be looked at there from that perspective. It's not just a simple, the airpark wants to file a lawsuit and end the school. There's always more to the story, and I think it's fair for you guys to hear both sides. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question.
If you don't mind, I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind.
So why did you hire an attorney?
Well, the airpark has.
You authorized this attorney to send this letter to us.
Okay, so let's.
Is that yes or no?
Point of order, Mr. Sanderson. Go ahead and please continue, Matt Perkins.
So I'll let, I mean, the letter will stand on its own, but I will say this, there's a billion dollars' worth of investment over there. And you anticipate that the people that are in charge of that investment are to just do nothing when there's a threat to that investment? I mean, if it was your billion dollars, would you do nothing?
So Matt, but they made that investment, if you look with the advisory circular, which the airpark.
Jeremy, I would pause you real quick. I'm here to help offer solutions to what the problem is. We talked, we spoke.
We spoke yesterday with that.
And my recommendation was.
I've offered you, I said, what if the town did give them a five-year lease, and as we work towards building a very nice building south of town, would the airpark be amenable to that?
I mean, I certainly think the airpark would definitely support the group in building this south of town, as we had discussed, and I had mentioned that to you when I spoke to you on the phone. I would say that kind of an important note there is, you know, the airpark isn't against a school. We're just trying to make sure that it's a good fit for the community, which is partially why between the airpark and a resident of the airpark, I believe $125,000 is going towards a master plan to help the town.
But we haven't seen that money yet.
To help the town make a educated decision on, you know, how to lay things out in the future. And so, you know, I.
We're also told that that money may.
Let him talk, Jeremy, let him talk.
So Jeremy, you want to, you've got advisory circulars, and you want to litigate it, but you don't want to talk to Raj, who is actually the person.
Raj is the one who said to look this up.
Okay, so I think you should have, as I recommended when we talked on the phone, I think you should have a discussion with our leadership, which is Raj, the president of the airpark. He's been in here before to speak to you guys, and I think that he can articulate all of the CFRs and all the advisory circulars from the FAA regarding placement of schools and other things adjacent to an airport. And I think if you have that conversation, and if the town presents the time to sit down and actually talk to the group over there, we can provide a lot of answers and a lot of clarity. But again, the town did not show up with, you know, just basically a threat and a lawsuit. The town showed up with an opportunity to try to help and figure out how to make it a reality to get what, you know, the town needed and wanted. And I get, Jeremy, you have a disdain for the airpark because of one member came at you for a, well.
The airpark has been.
Okay, let's just keep this conversation.
You say it.
Hey, Matt, keep the conversation directed to me, okay?
So anyways, I think the point is, is we're trying to make forth a positive effort to help the community here. And I feel like that, there's a bit of attempt to silence it. I get that Ms. Sanderson is a little upset about a letter that was sent, and I think you guys just have to understand, when you have that much money wrapped up in real estate, it's hard to just ignore threats that devalue it, and that.
So let me ask you a question real quick. Do you think that the airpark would be amenable to, let's just say, 60 days to work through some of these issues? Maybe there's another piece of town land that isn't in the flight path. We don't even know. I don't know where the flight path is.
Right, and I don't think the town has come to the airpark and wanted to sit down and have a real discussion about it prior.
I've been here for two years waiting for anybody. I'm open to it, and we can have the discussion tomorrow if you want.
True, and I'm certain that the board of the airpark would be more than happy to sit down with the town. I think our whole goal as the airpark is collaborating with the town and being a, you know, valuable citizen, valuable member of the community. I mean, we bring a lot to the town in terms of patronage to the businesses, to, I mean, there's school-aged children. I have a three-year-old and a one-month-old daughter, and so, you know, I don't see any problems having a school. In fact, they could be a great benefit, as I've told Dave. Dave and I have talked many times the last few days here, trying to brainstorm solutions to help with this. So it's not, it's not presented as in the light that Jeremy had laid it to where it's just threats from the airpark towards the town, towards the school. The airpark wants to come forward and assist and collaborate to come up with a solution that benefits everyone.
Okay, Matt.
I have a question.
Hold on a second. So I just want to make sure, I'll give you the chance. So would you be willing to talk to the leadership at the airpark and see if we can get together as soon as possible and figure out, because it's an undisclosed flight path or whatever? We don't know where it is. We don't know how, other piece of property that we may have that would affect.
Yeah, I mean, well, the proposed state of property is exactly 4,850 feet off the end of the runway, directly off the end of the runway, straight off of it. And so that's the concern, right? It's right at the end of a runway. That is our concern, first and foremost. And so, yeah, if the town wants to have a discussion and look for ways to solve it with some town land perhaps, it's an option, too. Again, we've even thrown out the opportunity to help do a acquisition of land and then a land swap with the town to make it even, so.
I'm a little concerned about the timing and how much time that would take, but go ahead. Hold on, let councilwoman Castillo have.
My only question is, you had mentioned that there had been discussions earlier. I was aware of some investors that had come forward and was looking at town land south of town. Just from your personal perspective, what were the challenges that you found that came into play with the airpark moving forward with investing in land further south, or members that you're aware of?
Well, I know that originally, when the board had reached out to the airpark, they got put in touch with a private resident at the airpark who has a history of investment in those sort of things, and they looked through this as an option and had asked some diligence questions and went through and reviewed it. And I just, I feel like, from what was represented to me, they weren't, they didn't see the viability of it being an investment in terms of a business. And I think that that was the first avenue that it was looked at. And then, you know, I brought up the idea of a potential land swap option with the airpark board, and they seemed interested in the idea. The rest of the board was very positive about that sentiment and trying to find a way to leverage what we have to help you guys find a suitable location that's beneficial to everybody. And talking to the school board, the school is planning to attract people from the communities that are south of Alpine, and placing the school just south of Alpine would, I think, help logically with some traffic issues and some other problems, and I think it would put it right off the highway, giving it better access and less impact on residential areas. So I thought, you know, why not? It's a wonderful idea. They'd found the land. We just want to help try to figure out how they can get it.
Mr. Sanderson?
Thank you, Matt.
One question. So you're willing to work with us. Are you willing to contact your attorney and rescind this letter?
I'm going to let Raj speak on that. I don't, you know, I don't have the unilateral authority to speak for the other board members of the Alpine Airpark. I can tell you what I have spoke to them about. I can tell you that we have a willingness to assist, a willingness to help the town and help Dave and help the school board. But, you know, I think that you'd have to just, we'd have to sit down with Raj and the rest of the leadership of the airpark to give you a concrete answer on something like that.
Well, I'm willing to sit down with them as soon as possible. And understand where the flight path is. Maybe there's another part that isn't in the flight path that we'd be happy to do. I don't know how that affects you, Dave. Maybe you can speak to that. Thank you, Matt. As far as the timing, is there any way that you could, you know, put a deposit on it that, you know, gives us a little more time?
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for this. My opinion is this, let's make a motion for this resolution tonight, that you're part of this. You guys are going to work together, and we will work together. You're not signing the lease tonight, but you're signing a resolution that says we're going to work with this, with our board, that you have a place to put your school in this town. And we'll work with you on that location and the details. That's the commitment we're willing to put in. I think as far as that threat, I would just disregard it. We have a guy that's willing to pay the lawyer bills if it becomes that. No, I'm just telling you, I mean, it's, I'm just telling you, we need to, this is going to happen. This is more important than a threat. The school is way more important. So, and I don't think the airpark wants to be that person in our community that everyone is upset at. I think they want to be liked by our community, because we don't want to start World War II with the airpark.
No, they've shown a willingness to wanting to work with us, for sure. But I think they took this action as like, you know, just a kind of.
Well, they didn't talk to us before they contacted their lawyer either. So I think at this point in time, the resolution needs to happen tonight, and let's make it happen. And as far as they, we'll work with the airpark whenever they want to reach out. That's up to them. So.
Thank you, Dave.
Pat, not to make a comment, but do you have a question? Well, we're not taking, we're not taking public comment right now. Pat, just so you know, he's a person that we wanted to hear from.
And you don't want to hear from me? I'm here, I'm here all the time.
He was associated with the conversation, and I'm just saying, like.
You know, I really, these people have had how much time, and you're not letting the public. And I know you say you've gotten public comment, but they came here, and now you're not letting anybody say anything against it.
And you've made public comment in the past as well.
I have, but they've made comment, too. Tonight, they got all the time, and nobody else gets to say anything. I mean, I'm saying that they came in here back, I think, was it in December? And they said they needed a vote that night so that they could get the state to give them, you know, permission. They're coming in here tonight and saying they need to vote tonight.
Yeah.
I don't think that that's fair.
And we have given you the letter of intent already, and basically, if I'm not mistaken, that's what you needed to put in the application, right? And I, personally, I think that letter of intent serves the same thing as a vote. I mean, this vote is not that much different than that letter of intent. I'm questioning at this point, if we do have the vote, I hope, I don't know where it's going to go. So personally, I'm wondering if we discuss taking a pause and maybe even consider. Let me finish, please. Let me finish, please. If we, if we take, whatever, a 30-day pause so we can get things in line and talk to them, then maybe you can figure out how to keep the buildings, the deposit on a building or whatever. I'm just wondering if there's another route to get this.
Well, I mean, this just starts, this isn't the lease that we're signing. This is a willingness for you to help us put together the lease and work on the land and get this, get this kind of shaped to come back to the council with the information. So, I mean, this resolution, this resolution tonight, that's what that's about. It's not about you're sealing a deal that the lease, this is the lease you're signing tonight. It's that we're going to negotiate the lease and work together and figure it out. And it also gives us, like, to go back to our, you know, us as a group wants to know that you guys are with us, because, you know, that's what we need to know.
And I think I'm concerned for the solvency of the town. If it becomes litigious tomorrow, we're 1.2 million over on the sewer plant. We're like working on wells, we're working on water studies. And I think, I think the solvency of the town, and it's kind what Mr. Hagedorn said, but if we're left holding the bag of having to hire outside counsel and it's six figures, that's the part that I think is the pressure. I'm not going to speak on anyone else, but on my behalf, that's the pressure I'm feeling.
Well, Robbie Hagedorn just told me that he's willing to put $100,000 into a fund.
But that's.
For the lawyers.
That's for you.
No, for lawyers, litigation, if we need it.
But I mean, if both parties are named, I guess that's where I'm at.
And I greatly appreciate that. I'm actually concerned about the financial aspect, but I'm also concerned about the timeline, because my understanding of it, even if we have the funds to fight this type of lawsuit, now we are in an injunction status, now we have pauses on development, now we're going to be in a freeze. So for me, I'm actually just as concerned about the timeline. What does that do for the town, and how does it affect every other aspect? Because then, not only our time, but our energy, all of our action items are going to have to do with this lawsuit and how we work around it. So I very much appreciate the financial aspect. I'm also concerned.
Yeah, and I think that we shouldn't be held hostage by, you know, people that are neighbors, and I think we should stand up. If we bend over now, we're going to bend over every time. Exactly not. We're not, we're not going to, we're going to stand up and fight for our town and for our children.
Yeah. It's not a.
What's that? I don't understand your point.
He's meaning a flight path, but a school is, a school is different.
That'd be my question. Today is holding this.
But I don't know, I have to study it.
Councilmember Larson, do you have a comment that you would like to make?
I'm equally as concerned as not putting the town in a financial bond. However, as much as Matt wants to say, I have a disdain for the airpark. I do not. I do have a disdain for the way they've done business because, so they're arguing about the flight path. This is in the way of the flight path. CDC's in the way of the flight path. They have homes that are literally next to the runway that do not meet 150-5194B. You need to be 1,050 feet away from the runway. So they don't even meet their own rules, but yet they're telling us how to do our job and what to do and how to develop our town.
Does that make the property worthless and you have to do anything with it anyway? Is that what they're saying?
Well, it's recreationally zoned. It's recreation. So I don't know.
Take Dave's path and work to be a good neighbor, to try and work it out. That's why I said, what about you give them the five years, and then you work towards the place down south? But I have a hard time, and I'll be damned if somebody telling me who, that they're going to push the way we're going to do business on behalf of the town of Alpine when it's the town of Alpine, regardless of the school. So today is the school, what's tomorrow? That's what upsets me.
And just to clarify Dave's earlier point, this is, we're not negotiating this specific piece of land. And so we can look at other areas of land. And I think, Mayor Green, we really appreciate the letter of intent that you sent with the application, but as a mom, I think what we're looking for is a text message to moms tomorrow, hey, town is on board, the school is going to be in Alpine, let's go. That's what we're looking for, and that's what this does. It gives us that confidence to know where we're going to put our kids, where the school's going to go, whether it's behind the CDC, the school, in the flight path, or it's someplace else in town. This is giving all these parents that vote of confidence. The town is on board, let's go.
Well, and I spend a lot of time, and I think Dan should probably come up, but I spent a lot of time, Dave and I, when we were on the committee, looking at private spots in town, and I still have that data. It's still available. So I know, and I just am learning of, I didn't know anything about land swapping ideas, but I think that would be something to entertain as well. We had ideas, so I would love to present that to your board again as well.
Right, it seemed hinged on investment.
Is there any other private land that you looked at within the?
I mean, we're at a point, our board is broke. We have no money.
Well, I mean, Dave, that's a concern.
Well, listen, listen.
Okay, but let me clarify.
Hold on, hold on.
So the only thing that I'm going to clarify is, May of 2025, we met in Dave's garage, and we had a meeting with Senator Doc Stetter and a large group. We had been promised by Mr. Funk that there were millions, millions upon millions to be donated. And so what's been such the pattern is, oh, we're going to donate, but now we're not. Oh, we have the money, and so that, and again, I am a parent, I may not have kids in this district right now, but I have done everything for this community, and I don't hit pause very often. I am like, we want music, I'm gonna do music, we need to do this, we're gonna do it. I am all in when I'm all in. I think that is just the pattern that's been tough to follow, and I'm sad millions disappeared for you guys, because that's honestly what breaks my heart. That 16 acres should have been yours. It was perfect for growth, it could have had housing one day, like, sky's the limit. So for me, this is the, the battle, now it's the solvency of the town. There's just components that are.
We, we made it this far, we, we went over how the financial, our pathway for financial, we went through that with you guys. There is a way for us to get it done. As far as us having cash in our bank to go buy the land, we do not have that. We want the town, the town being on board and being a support. Tonight's the night, we need to vote, we need to know that you guys are on our, on the board, you wanna vote. These guys that voted for you, they need to hear it, they need to hear where you guys stand. I mean, whether they want it or don't want it, they need to know where you guys all stand, and we want to hear where you stand. We want to know where, where we're gonna, where we're gonna go next, because if you guys, if this dies here, I'm, I'm not sure where, where we're gonna go next. We want to know we have the town's support, we want to vote tonight.
I, I just, I don't want this to go on forever, but I'm, I will do this. So we'll take, um, we'll take 18 minutes of questions for these guys from the public and the opportunity to make a, a public comment, but we, you have 18 minutes until nine o'clock happens. So line up over here, and everyone can come, voice, say your name, say a quick comment. Okay, let me also clarify.
Two minutes.
You, you don't have unlimited time, you need to get, you, you, everyone needs to, it's rapid fire, stand up here, and you have one minute to get your question out, your comment, go ahead.
I'm Patricia McQuade, I live in the town, Incorporated Town of Alpine. We were told that there were millions of dollars that was gonna pay for the school. There isn't a million dollars. You said you didn't talk to anybody about committing their children. You don't know how many prospective people our, our children are coming, right? You don't know that, and I want to know how we can vote on. There's nobody here who does not want a school in Alpine. Nobody here, and I resent anybody implying that that's the case, but we want to do it right. And so, why can't you ask people ahead of time, will you commit?
I, I disagree.
Why can't you commit to a school? There's a school, if we get a school, will you send your kids? You didn't commit, that's your point.
Point of order, please, this is, she's gonna take public comment.
Public comment, please.
Like I said. Voice is respected, thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Julie, I live in Alpine Incorporated, I'm literally right in this neighborhood right here. I'll be less than a minute. My husband and I moved here a couple of years ago. One of our biggest concerns has always been that the school district is so far of a bus ride. The idea of putting her on a bus and sending her all the way down to Afton, we will move rather than do that. So that's not even a consideration for us. We're gonna leave the town of Alpine, I just started a business here, so my business will leave as well. And I think, I have a lot of mom friends locally, I will say, you end up connecting with people who have kids your own age, and it's a big concern with every parent that I talk to. And every parent, if there was a school in Alpine, just has said that they would 100% put their kid in it. So I do think there is a big interest for it, and I think that in terms of people moving to Alpine, there's a lot of hesitancy, because there's not a school. And when it comes to school-aged kids, if you're moving here and you're told, well, your kid has to sit on a bus for two hours a day, it's kind of a big negative, and it's enough to not want to be in this town. So I think having something here is gonna be a really big positive, and it's definitely gonna make some decisions for me and my husband in terms of what we're gonna do once she's school-aged, so.
Thanks, Julie. Real quick.
Hello, everybody, I'm Matt Perkins, I live on Airport Drive, my address says Alpine, Wyoming, so take that for what it's worth. I have a couple of questions for the board, so specifically for you. When you first stood up, you mentioned, I apologize, I'm bad with names, I got Dave, and I got Rob, Meredith, thank you.
Matt, keep it really quick, because you only have a minute.
So you mentioned that if the, the vote doesn't happen tonight, that this is the only chance, the only opportunity, but if I've, I've talked to Dave and I've tried to understand this the best I can, it sounds to me like, despite that being the case, I think the portables are a big concern for you guys, but you actually, from my understanding, have till fall of 2026 to kind of put it together. Do you think that more time maybe would be helpful at the end of it, to where you guys could get maybe more permanent buildings, kind of skip the portables, and kind of really get to the dead vision?
Can you go up there, please, just real quick?
So, that is a great point. We want to do this school right, we want to build a beautiful classical school that represents the education, that represents the beautiful surroundings in Alpine. Design and engineering takes time, and that just doesn't give us enough time for a proper design and engineering and construction in order to make it happen 100% by 2026. You're at least eight months in design and engineering and making sure we're meeting all the land development codes, and, you know, that we're amenable to all of that, and then, you know, you're at least a year in construction, and that's with a really nice winter that doesn't snow six inches on March 18th.
Okay, let's keep, keep moving forward, thank you for that comment.
Hi, Heather Goodrich, are you guys writing down questions or rapid firing them?
Rapid fire.
Okay, all right, parent educator of 28 years, I have two kids. So my questions are, first of all, you made a comment only positively interested parents, parents, please come to the meeting. I've heard sort of this a lot. You guys need to be open to criticism and questions if this is public, school paid for with my public money. You have said, I've heard a lot of comments that it has to be in the town, so I'd like someone to explain why it has to be in the town. There's lots of comments about the school being able to use the structure. However, APA has a history of not letting people use their structures, so I want to make sure that that is really solved before you make that promise. And then, I'm just wondering if Andrea, no offense Andrea, lovely, but are you gonna recuse yourselves since your husband's on a board? And also Jeremy, are you, since you were signed an application for nonprofit articles of incorporation on September 24th for them, so I feel like you should probably also recuse yourself.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
There is no requirement to then to recuse themselves if they do not have a pecuniary interest in it under Wyoming law.
Okay.
Okay?
How about a conflict of interest, and your husband's on the board?
Conflict of interest under Wyoming law.
Okay, well, I guess that's my question.
You have to have a pecuniary interest.
Okay, okay.
So don't come in using threats.
How is that a threat? Ooh, I feel like you're threatening me right now. I'm intimidating Andrea. I just asking if her husband, if her husband, oh no, wait a second, that was really awful.
Please, you've lost your, your minutes up at this point.
Hold on a second.
I'm just, I'm asking.
Hold on, hold on, quick, please.
This is what we're talking about when we say you guys aren't listening to us, you're not making an open conversation.
Uh, Dan Scalplining and zoning. It would seem to me that if we rewrite the ordinance to make an agreement about helping them, it takes the pressure off the board. It takes the pressure off the town. It, they want an agreement that's met, that you guys can agree on. But if it's attached to a piece of property, you don't want to do it. So rewrite the ordinance so they can make an agreement with you, and we'll, great idea. Smarter, cooler heads prevail, we can work the exchange out. They find a different piece of property, it's out of the runway, everybody gets a school, everybody goes home, everybody has Christmas. But you gotta rewrite the.
Just to clarify, the, the ordinance doesn't say a specific piece of land.
But it says that, that it's a property by the town.
Town-owned land.
Town-owned land.
Right.
Get, get rid of that, just making an agreement, all they want is an agreement.
I don't know how that helps.
Well, you got a good guy right there.
I don't know how that helps us, because the whole idea is tied, tied to a piece of town property.
Correct, but the agreement is not about the town property, it's about.
Well, we already have.
They want the town to help them, great. You're gonna negotiate the property with somebody else, and they get to build their school somebody else, somewhere else, I don't really care. It just, this, the ordinance isn't gonna work for you, it's not gonna work for anybody here. They want an agreement, the ordinance is in the way.
It's a resolution.
Or a resolution, make a new resolution.
Okay, thanks, Dan, let's move on.
Thanks, Dan.
Hi, my name is Ahmad, I'm here with my wife Liz and daughter Mia. First, thank you, guys, you guys don't have to do this. If I were you guys, I would probably just move on, honestly. And, you know, town, same, I mean, I know this is really hard, I know this is a lot. I know that you guys have been working for years, way before I got here, to see if we can get a school. I'm just hoping we can just, just make, I mean, it'd be nice if we just take a vote and just no. I feel like yes or no. I feel like we've been just kind of dragging for a while, and I feel like every time we hear about these meetings, or I watch them on YouTube, I just, I just feel like it's just dragging, it just feels just terrible thinking about the fact we have this opportunity that might just fall away. Thank you.
And I'm just here for moral support, and also to second what Julie said about, we've talked to our mom friends, and a big concern is the transportation and sending your kids so far away. What if something happens, it's not convenient to drive 40 minutes when your kid's sick at school, or they forgot their lunch, God forbid, and, exactly, and we work in Jackson. So, and nothing good happens on a school bus when kids are unsupervised for that long, and I went to Catholic school, so.
Sue Colbus, resident Alpine, I'm all for school, I've been saying it, love it. By the way, I, in the 70s, I commuted one hour every morning and one hour every afternoon, so, I mean, I lived it, and I think I turned out okay. Having said that, I, Jim, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I pulled the Ethics and Conflict of Interest from WAM, the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, and my understanding is that a conflict of interest is a set of circumstances that creates a risk that your professional judgment or actions regarding the greater good will be unduly influenced by what you stand to gain from a decision. There is a difference between legal and ethical. If attorney says it's okay, it could still be unethical. There are Wyoming state statutes with regards to what's happening, and I've read it all, and I, I'll talk to you about this all day long, but whatever happens, I'm pro-school, I want everyone to know that. Wherever it lands, whatever. But I'm having an issue with how you treated Heather, and I disagree, and I think the, these two, Jeremy and Andrea, need to recuse themselves.
Just, just a real point of emphasis there, I, I have read it as well, and I don't think they should have to recuse themselves. There's no financial gain that they would have, so I, I've talked to our attorney, and I agree with that, so I'll just make that a note. Go ahead.
Mayor, Councilman, thank you. My name is David Walters, I've lived here about 15 years now, and own my business, successful business across the street for about 15 years, and my daughter's 14 now, my son's 12, and, you know, they've been taking the bus for many years now, and, and it's time that I feel I should have with them, and if it creates one more core memory that I have with my kids, that there's a school in town here, or for somebody else's kids at this point, I think that's huge and worth the fight, whatever fight we have to battle. And when I bought my business across the street, was it perfect? No. Did I have to build a garage, did I have to deal with limited parking, did I have to fine tune it over time? Absolutely, there was little fine tuning I had to do through the line, but I don't see why the town can't have some type of resolution and approve something where we can fine tune the location, we can fine tune whatever we need to do just to make this happen. Thank you.
Hi there, Megan Rumsey, really hope you guys can get a handle on conducting meetings. Mr. Larson, again, just totally over the top, quack, quack to you. Ms. Chalkford, the way that you burst out was pretty unbecoming. So, you know, it's like, it's quite apparent that what you guys have is a vanity project, you have a private school, just, just do a.
Hold on.
Hey.
Let's please be respectful of all public comment.
I can answer those questions if you want, but I don't feel, I'm, I'm absolutely pro-school, but what we have in this room, we have educators, you're completely walling them off from this process unless they're toxically positive. And Dave, you should be ashamed of yourself, you're a Lincoln County School District Board member, and Senator Doc Stater, this has gone a little too far, this is a private school. How many people want a classical education for their children, and define what that means to you? Because I sure as hell don't want to see that in Alpine.
Okay, point of order, point.
Next comment, please.
I have one other question, Dave, Dave.
Please address the chair.
Um, I'd like to ask Dave Sharet if the pedophile who was working at the West Valley City School who was curating a pornographic scrapbook of children and covering the cameras is out of prison yet? Because he taught at their school and they don't background track.
Okay, anyways, thank you for your comment, moving on.
Hi, Anesina Malik, I'm an educator and an Alpine resident. This is sort of just the parents, I only have a minute, so I'm gonna talk fast. This is a quote from Joseph Eyler during the state Wyoming Charter Board approval meeting, said, "No one really spoke to the curriculum that, and that struck me." So I question on whether people of Alpine really know what they're signing up for as far as a charter school. I feel much more comfortable with members of the public, and those parents would have spoke that that is what they wanted for their son or daughter. I know everyone wants a school. My only concern is that you don't understand the direct instruction, which is the method they use to teach students. So I advise every parent to go onto their newly revamped website, the American Preparatory Academy. They have a whole bunch of new videos you can click on about what direct instruction looked like in small groups. So just really go to their website, look at their curriculum, everything's on there. It's really cool to see, actually, I was really impressed at how they made all those changes. And you can just watch videos of what instruction, or at least part of the instruction will look like for the next five years.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brandon Merrill, I'm from Star Valley Ranch. I'm completely excited about another opportunity for school for children in this area other than Lincoln County School District. I appreciate Mayor and the council members opening this up to public comment. I do want to say, just one last piece, and Dave has said it three or four times this evening. We're not here, this is a highly heated debate, obviously, in this community, in this valley, but for what we're here and what this is for this evening is to seek a motion to approve resolution to proceed negotiations of a lease. So we're not saying where the school's gonna be, when it's gonna be there. They're just asking for a chance to continue to team with you and the community members to make this happen. So, at the end of the day, that's what we're here for, that's what the vote is. That's all I want to say, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Sanderson? Yep. I. Uh, no, sorry, we, we still have two minutes, go ahead, please.
I won't take that long.
Yep.
This gentleman spoke excellent. It's all this is, to get something started. I've been in Alpine since before it was a town. We wouldn't be anywhere if somebody wouldn't take the guts, like his dad did, and a lot of our other people that were on this town council for years. I sat through these meetings since this became a town. And we've been threatened by lawsuits over almost everything we ever tried to go with here in Alpine. That's life today. And just like this gentleman said, talk to them, but get something started. The people, like Dave said, people voted, it's pretty obvious, even the people that are against this school. There should be a school, let's get something started. Let's start somewhere, it's time, it's way past time. My daughter homeschooled for 12 years because her choice was a 36-mile snowmobile ride and then a 36-mile bus ride, that's impossible. That's impossible, if it was here, she could have done it. She didn't have enough time in the day to do that, so she homeschooled for 12 years, she had no option.
Okay, we're right up against the nine o'clock, so I think we've, we'll end public comment. I'm glad we got that in, everyone feels like they had a chance, hopefully. My first question is to town council. My first question is, to town council, do you see any way that we can approve this resolution that would appease them and be able to move forward without? I want to figure out how, maybe we just add a line that says we will actively work with the air park to look at other locations? We would consider land swaps? I mean, any of the suggestions that are coming out? Does anyone have any comments or something as simple as that?
You could add a resolution to proceed with negotiation of lease with Alpine Education Foundation, Inc., and the Alpine Air Park. I say, so it'd be adding language, a resolution to proceed with negotiation of lease with Alpine Education Foundation, Inc., and the Alpine Air Park.
So you would negotiate the lease with us, but we'd also coordinate with the airport?
Involve with the airport.
Yep. I think that's better.
I think that's a good solution, I really feel like this is a kicking off point, this is a starting point, this is getting the conversation going. It's not addressing a specific piece of land. We need to start something, and we need to be strong as a community.
Do we, Mr. Sanderson, do you have any suggestions?
Just a motion to amend your-
Right, but do you have any suggestions on how we could phrase something that says that we're willing to work with the air park and, I mean, I'd love for them to pull back this letter or their threat and make it-
I would say that you just add in there the authorize the mayor to, of course, in section one where you authorize the mayor to negotiate, and that any final draft presented towards the council would include a resolution with resolving the issues with the air park and them withdrawing their threat. Right, that's their lawsuit. That's not very well-
Then items four through six don't make sense to me. So those need to go away, because you're saying replating, reserving, rezoning, like, I just, yeah, and I'm-
Because we're just not quite there.
Without a representative, I know Matt's here, but are we back to-
I would say we probably need to strike items four through six and replace them with something that will actively work with the air park in an effort to rescind their threat of litigation and-
I just, can we do this right now?
Yes, this is exactly what we need.
Okay, so I don't, I don't agree that the mayor is authorized to sign the final lease or authorized to negotiate the terms of a five-year-
It doesn't say that. It says that the mayor can negotiate the lease and then he'll bring it to town council for final approval.
But we wouldn't bring in any other bodies to negotiate, it would just be the mayor?
How else, what would you suggest?
I mean, I think it would be like a workshop, legal counsel-
Legal counsel and have the council involved.
I'm open to, I mean, I just want to keep the thing moving forward, so.
Well, I think until you figure out a land swap, I guess I'm just, I don't know what other town land, that's where I'm just, I feel trapped.
My feeling is, Councilwoman Scefidia, is that if that piece of property over there is in the flight path, until we know where the flight path is, for example, we have land over by the sewer plant. I'm just thinking, maybe that's not in the flight path, we can sign a five-year lease, a temporary lease on that. We have no master plan for that area, we're obviously going to develop that. We've invited, you know, Dave and maybe other people to work with this in the master plan process. I mean, there has to be a way that we can not be in their flight path and avoid this litigation and move forward. So that's my goal right now, if we can figure that out.
Are there any other modulators to purchase, so that we, I feel like everything, and Pat brought this up, is what's hard is, it's urgent, and I get that it's urgent, people, I get that this is urgent. I'm just, it's urgent to do this, but then we, then no progress was made, urgent to do this. So if they purchase modulators and we can't figure out a spot, that is why I'm nervous.
Then they sell them.
Mr.-
Okay.
What if you just strike three through six, and, because it's going to hap, whatever it is that's come before you with the negotiations, has to be approved by you guys. So, if you have all of these contingents settled out and whatever, if there is a piece of property, this isn't even saying there is a piece of property. It's going to have to, a proper lease is going to have to have a proper description, legal description of the property, so you'll know by that you can participate in the negotiations. And if you just stroke the rest, or strike the rest of it-
For town-owned land.
But it says town-owned land.
I'm still confused how that would be in the flight path.
But if there is no town-owned land, when we sit down to it and go, this is where we're coming back with, we say either this one that works for the air park, or this one works for the air park, you guys can decide which one, or whether or not you want to enter into the lease. It still gives you authority to strike it down if it doesn't work out.
Should we also add something that's town loan, or town-owned land, or land that's acquired through a land swap or something like that, or should we just not muddy the water at this point?
Well, I mean, the land swap, I think, would be part of the lease agreement, because you're going to have to, you've got to go through a process to do the swap.
Can't identify every unknown. We kind of have to have a little bit of good faith to go forward.
So you've got, what you're basically have to do is-
Learn some good things.
Give, give the mayor, and have you guys involved in trying to work out the details and all the contingencies that we can at this time, and that would have to be brought back before the council and have a public hearing and be approved at that time.
So then where would the modulators land?
Because you're working against a tight timeline.
So we have, till June, they have a specific window in June that they have to come, they have to get moved.
They have to be removed.
They have to be moved in a certain window in June, so we need to make the deal and have an agreement the next couple of days. And then we have to, our, part of our agreement is to get the modules out by, we have like a 10-day window, and so, so we have to kind of get all things moving to make that happen.
And then do you have the $160,000 then to move them? And that will just be part of your loan?
Well, we are working through all that, those details, so we have a lot of local donors, and, I mean, there's not, there's not a magic pathway, guys, we're doing this with, like, the point we're here is amazing. And a little bit of good faith that we can work together, like, we have, the town has nothing to lose here. We're asking you to, to lease some land for five years to give us a chance. We're asking a chance for something that, that has never been done, that will not happen. This is your window, I guarantee you-
No, I completely understand.
I mean, if you guys work with us, we'll, we'll work our tails off to make, keep going. And we need to know we have your support, we have your back, we're going to, we're going to work together. That's all we need to know. If you're not, if, I mean-
I have a lot of unknowns. I'm going to be, and I, and this is why we have a five-person board. I served on the Alpine Education Committee, I'm the only one here with a toddler who would potentially go to the school. So I'm completely 100% aware of the stakes, and I know how much that means to my family. But I'm also, that's why this position is so difficult, is because I have to look at, I have to look at all the factors, right? And I'm, I'm an analytical thinker, I'm not an emotional thinker, I'm a very data-driven thinker, and so I look at, we've, we've prioritized this, in my opinion, we've prioritized this every time that the committee wanted to sit down. And I know there's been a lot of changes, there's been a lot of board changes, there's a lot of things that can be worked through and will be worked through, we're not looking for, I'm a mom, there is no perfect solution, right? But for me, I have to look at, what data do we have, what numbers do we have? Okay, is there a downside? The only downside, aside from that there are people that live in Riverview Meadows that are worried about traffic, which I know would be taken into account, they're worried about the land use, okay? And this is town-owned land, so this means that everybody owns it and everybody has a seat at the table. I would be worried, even though it's unencumbered, okay? We don't know infrastructure costs because we haven't moved through planning and zoning. We pushed really, really hard for a master plan, we pushed for funding wherever, regardless of where it comes from, we pushed that with the knowledge that they would start with a school zone, because Alpine doesn't even have a school zone. And again, you can work through all these factors. But I was hoping there'd be more involvement, at least with planning and zoning, I was hoping that we'd have more of a protocol and a plan in place. If this town, and I see a lot of numbers, I look at budgets all the time with Monica and with our budget season. So I'm aware of also what's at stake as far as the town's solvency. If I look at that and I see, is there a town parcel that's going to be, even though it's unencumbered, but basically, we're telling you, we commit to five years for the success of a school. If something happens, that's our asset. So, again, I'm going to be the outlier, because I'm going to think of worst-case scenario, but I also think that, yes, can we find a solution? I'm surprised, because I've spoken to four investors in the background. I want a school and I want it to be a success, so I immediately think, what needs to happen to make the school a success? I'm surprised that I've seen so many investors pull out. Because at the end of the day, even with a resolution, if it moves through, we're going to enter into a contract, which means you're the principal. We're setting up a whole agreement that has a financial aspect to it. So for me, that's, that's where I'm at right now. I'm not against finding solutions at all. I think if we could find people who want to come to the table and immediately work towards purchasing another piece of land that's not tied up in a lot of bureaucracy and time and public advertisement and, and passion and, you know, emotion, then that'd be great, because then you can move forward without any challenges, right? Well, that's not true, there's always challenges. Right. But a couple of things, what would we go to planning and zoning with? Would we go to them and say, we want to build a school? Because that's where we're at. Right. What would we go to planning and zoning with? You'd come to them basically looking at temporary versus permanent structures. Which is what we're doing. The modulars are temporary.
No, planning and zoning hasn't-
Why would we do that without having the town on board? We're wasting our time. We need to know that you're on board, and then we can move forward and get-
But that's the part-
I'd like to make one clarification, you keep using harsh, harsh language that donors have told out, that we've taken a step and gotten nowhere. She just said it, and that's fine, we get it, but I think it's important to clarify for everyone here, I've walked out of every single one of these meetings and just been, they kicked a can down the road. It's sidelined. So what donor is going to come and say, I'm going to, you know, we know that our donors want it in the town of Alpine, which is amazing to have that kind of support behind the town of Alpine. They don't want to put it south of town, I appreciate the land south of town, and it could be great. But the amazing location for the parents here, there's a daycare, I drop my, my daughter off at daycare, I could drop my daughter off, drop my son off, boom, 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 traffic is compiled, okay? So what would we go, what would we come to people with, is my question? What if we go to Julie and her daughter and say, hey, you want a school in Alpine? Yeah, hell yeah, I want a school in Alpine, would you roll this kid? Hell yeah, where's it going to be? We don't know. What do we tell parents? So it's like, what do we tell donors? So it's like, you want us to go and find all these like magical people and all these magi, all this magic, and then say, okay, well, where is everyone? We're here, we're here, we're on YouTube, we're emailing you. Please, get a school, have some vision, have some leadership. That's what it takes to build something incredible. This is, we get it, we get it, we've come to you. This is our hail mary.
We need a chance. Give us a chance to show you that this is a good thing for town. I mean, your risk is low.
Just give us a minute, we're going to, we're working on something here.
While we're waiting, I just want to clarify one thing, there was a question, and I think it was about the use of the building, I think in the presentation we went through that, the foundation owns the building. It's not an APA building, it's a, it's a building owned by the foundation, which the board members, their community members, and, you know, it's not anything but that. So, it's a public school for the public, it's not a, it's not a religious school, it's, it's a public school with a classical education, that's all. Thanks.
I asked that question, I just wanted to clarify, I am not in any school, but I would ask you to make sure that you are sure that maybe you will allow the public to choose that vote, because it's on, it's not, it's been one of the big things that communities have had.
We'll confirm, but we're not under the impression that that will be the case, because the school is owned by the foundation.
Ask Dave, I was right there.
Yep, he just answered it, he's a part of the public, so I'm just answering on behalf of the foundation, that it's a piece of property that's owned by the foundation that is for the public.
Councilman Larson, you might have something you'd like to add, if you turn on your microphone. Trying to find a solution here, people.
Make a motion to, actually, we're not there yet. So just working on this section of it, strike three through six, and add number three.
So you, would you like to make a motion for amendment?
First of all, do we have it on the table?
Yes.
We have it on the table. Yep. Yeah, I'll take, so, so make a motion to amend a resolution to proceed with negotiations of lease with Alpine Education Foundation, Inc., amending items three through six, striking those, adding a new number three to include, the mayor will actively work with Alpine Air Park and Alpine Education Foundation to find a property for lease that will benefit all parties involved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second, so discussion. We just came up with this on the fly, can you read it against the new?
The new, new number three, the mayor will actively work with Alpine Air Park and Alpine Education Foundation to find a lease, a property for lease that will benefit all parties involved.
That's line number one.
This, this would be a new three, so his motion was to strike three through six, and replace this with something that, Mr. Sanderson, did you get the gist of it?
I'm trying, repeat it, sorry.
And I think it might be beneficial to put it up on the screen.
Yeah. Do you want to type it up?
I don't, I don't have a way of it. Yeah, that would be best.
So we would keep one, keep line item one and two as is.
Let's, you know what, let's take a five-minute recess and we'll get this together. If anyone needs to use the restroom or get a water, get some air, we'll give you five minutes to do it, and just allow us to do this thing, okay? You guys can turn on your microphones. You guys can turn on your microphones.
...
Okay. We're now back in session. Thank you for your patience. I think we've come up with something. We still have the motion on the table, and we want to make sure that everyone here can read and understand, and all the town council can understand as well. So what we've, the motion is to strike what was three through six, and Councilmember Larson has added the new written...
New language to number one, sir. New language and new number three.
Oh, you have new language. Okay, let's, so let's just, the motion on the table is to strike that and do the new number three. You've added new language to number one as well?
Correct.
Okay, so let's just handle the, your first amendment, and then you can make an amendment to number one next. How about that?
Gotcha. I think we can wrap it all in.
I think we can put it all into one.
How, do we need to just make another motion?
You could just, this is the amend.
Yeah.
Okay, amendment to the amendment. Go ahead, Councilmember Larson.
I'll just start from scratch. Make a motion to amend Resolution Number 2025-009, a resolution to proceed with negotiation of lease with Alpine Education Foundation, Inc. The amendment would be striking numbers three through six and then adding language to number one. Quote, "The mayor is authorized to negotiate the terms of a five-year lease agreement for town-owned land or other real property within the area of the town. With the Alpine Charter Board, in accordance with the previously established letter of intent, number two does not change." And then the new number three, "The mayor will actively work with Alpine Air Park Board and the Alpine Education Foundation to find real property that will benefit all parties involved."
We have a second in the audience and a second up here, so we have two seconds. Discussion. In my mind, you can watch yourself. In my mind, this should suffice your needs, and we're working together to actively go find a piece of property, whether it's that property, whether it's over here, whether it's a land swap, but we will actively get on that. That's the intent of this. Dave, do you agree?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Do you mind turning that on? Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Matt, does this language work for you guys?
I mean, I think that our only intention is to help guide this in a way that's positive for all sides of the community. You know, I recognize that there's as big of a community on this side of the bridge as there is on our side of the bridge, and I think that if we can all come together for a real solution, makes everybody happy. I don't see that there's a downside.
Thank you. And I will add, I just spoke to another member at the air park about these changes and seemed very open to this and thinks it's a change in the right direction, so...
Did you guys know which member?
No, I wouldn't want to disclose that. But I'm opening up for other discussion between town council on this amendment. Good. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of said amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carried, three to two. Okay, so now we're back on this. Is there any other discussion at this point regarding the original resolution?
I'd just like to say, for those concerned about my vote, by all means, yes, I was on the initiating committee. My name is on the Articles and Corporation. Never received a dime. If anything, we paid out. But, and I'm no longer involved with it. Sorry, guys, but tag, you're it. And it was only for that moment. I don't receive any royalties, no money whatsoever, just that good feeling that hopefully one day we can bring a school down. And I will be voting.
Do you have that paper that we wrote on?
Can I make a comment?
Please, yes. This would be your time to make your, kind of find a comment.
Yeah, that's fine. I think one of the things I don't want to have happen is be vilified for how I voted. One of the dynamics, I have been spending, I can't even count the hours, with Sue Colbus working on the gravel pit. We are spread very thin. This came out of absolutely nowhere, this resolution that the mayor brought to us. And so this is a lot to digest at one time. I do want to make it very clear. If a lease comes back and there's negotiations, I am totally open to that. But I think just the way that this night has transpired, it came like a freight train that has been really hard, and I feel a little derailed at the moment. So, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I just need more time to process, and that's okay. I think things will move forward, but I would just like to see things done in a different way, and this has been a highly emotional evening. So I really appreciate the time we've spent to amend it, and we'll see what happens next. And thank you to the air park for answering some last-minute questions.
And I still offer to help with the enrollment study.
Yeah.
So I want to make that very clear. I haven't given 20 years of my life to this town and valley to not be part of the solution. So I just want that on the record as well.
Yes, I'll be right there, Lons.
Do you have any final thoughts, Councilmember Burridge or Larson?
No.
Okay. So I'll hopefully say the final things. From the very beginning, I've been pro-school. I started the, or recommended we start the Alpine Education Committee, and we've been working with this group ever since. Obviously, there's a few things that we could improve upon. I mean, I wish we could have done it different tonight. I wish we would have had months, weeks, however much time to put this in front. But sometimes that's the way government works. A deadline comes up, and it's my prerogative to bring something forward that benefits a town, even if it's somewhat last minute. So my feeling is that we've given it an ample amount of time tonight to discuss. We've received so many comments on both sides. So I feel like we hear you, and we want to move forward. We want to be part of the solution, as Councilmember Skaviti said. We're here to do whatever. So really, that's all I've got to say. So I think it's time for a vote, and then we can move on. At this point, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2025-009 as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, three to two. Resolution passes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
At this point, we're just going to move on to our other business since that passed. You're more than welcome to stay, but if you guys...
Mr. Mayor, we might want to take a five-minute break to clear the room. Mr. Motion, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute break.
We'll take a recess. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you, Meredith, for everything.
You know, you can always count on the back row.
Okay, we're back in session. Waiting for one, but we'll slowly... They like to sit at the back and judge us from the back row. Next is the building fee development schedule. I would entertain a motion to get that on the table.
Make a motion to approve ordinance Number 2025-002, Building and Development Fee Schedule, first reading.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion. Madam Clerk, we're going to lean on you because I just haven't spent enough time with this. Can you give us the really down and dirty, what this is for and how we're going to implement it into our...
Yeah, and so the two ordinance is that this is about the town council decides to go, which was the recommendation of the building inspector. It actually will also require you to adopt the International Code Council Building Valuation Data, which is the next item.
Which is the next resolution?
Yes, the next ordinance.
Or ordinance, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that you're right. And so I've rewritten this ordinance to match the new process and Christine had made a recommendation to raise all the fees across the board by 20% with the exception of the building evaluate ones that used to... Sorry, thank you. Building valuation multiplier.
So that is... So that was one of my questions. So we are 20% is what we went up over existing?
On the other ones, yeah. And in truth, I actually started... I've been reviewing the line-by-line income items and planning and zoning is favorable as of right now. So, I don't know if it's necessary. So, I don't know if it's necessary. I don't know.
Well, the...
But we, you know...
The reason for this is we're kind of changing the way that we're charging our fees.
Yes.
We're going away from charging things... I'm kind of brain-dead right now, but it used to be... Or what we're doing currently is based on only square footage, or...
It was a base fee, a base rate plus a square footage charge.
Okay.
And it's... Yeah, and so the only thing the building valuation data in the multiplier works for is for new construction. So that would be a new home, addition, but things like remodels, it doesn't work for. It doesn't work for minor construction permits.
We have some exceptions.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to ask for clarification. The inspection fees are not part of the building fee. They went way up.
No.
Because his fee for his fees to do a full inspection job went to $2,500.
And what was it previous since?
That is something we did not have before.
No.
His... It's $300 an hour for five inspections.
No.
$175.
No.
It says $175.
Hold on, let's read it off of this.
Let's back up.
Yeah.
So, initially, he presented a proposal and he had calculated out, based on what other municipalities have done throughout the state. So, it was the 65% was the standard amount for the plan review fee and then he was matching that for the building inspections. And so, but he used the number 50%, not 65. And so, the mayor has... And I have talked to him and he will be charging us by the hour at a rate... At a set rate of $175 an hour for everything that he does. And so, what that means is we aren't going to pay based... He's not going to get a percentage of the fees. So, we are going to charge the fees and he's going to bill us and we're going to pay his bill. Now, that doesn't... I need to be clear. I put the state recommended amount in this form because we don't know what our costs are going to be. I do think it's entirely likely that we may, through the... After we get through the building season, we may need to look at this in October and say, "Well, that didn't work."
No, we're absolutely going to have to look at it again. This is the best guess that we can make. We're going with kind of the industry standard and we're going to have to look at it.
Right, we're going to have to make adjustments as we move forward and have more of a pattern.
And the nice thing about this is every single year, our council, future councils, can look at this number, this multiplier, and change it. And that... They can adjust it up and down every single year.
Well, we actually went with a lower multiplier because it was going to be 80 instead of 75.
Yeah, well, we actually had some numbers in there that were quite a bit higher.
Right.
And we looked at commercial versus residential, like, should one be higher? Obviously, we don't want to, you know, beat up on the people building a single-family residence. So... But we don't know what change to make to the commercial, so we kind of decided just make this kind of industry standard and we'll reevaluate soon.
Is this your understanding, Dan?
Yeah.
Sorry, Dan, Mike.
Sorry, Dan.
Can you go on the mic?
Well, and thank goodness this is first reading.
I'm sorry. No, it's...
I want to make sure this is what you...
I'm doing the math in my head and I... I get it. I get it. I was incorrect. I'm using what, you know, the models that I saw from the previous and was thinking that we had followed that, so I apologize.
No, that's okay. No apology necessary.
I think that you might actually want to take a look at this in July.
Right, okay.
In July?
Yeah, because if we do get, you know, we just don't want to be going downhill. We want to at least stay even.
I was going to suggest fall because...
Okay.
After the building.
But if you think July is a better...
Because it's mid-season and you'll catch it. I just don't want you to... I don't want the town to lose.
I hear you.
The problem is, there's not much that we can do about it in July. I mean, you know, the frequency of meetings, things like that.
Well, if we shift to every two weeks, you can pass it in three weeks, six weeks.
I'm fine looking at... We should be looking at...
Oh, you're talking about not doing this until July?
No. Do it now.
Okay, now.
No, he's saying now.
Yeah, I'm talking about reevaluating July.
So, I do... I would like for all of you council members, I wanted to explain, we did the 20%. It was completely arbitrary. There really, for me, wasn't any real thought in that.
I got feedback that a few builders were like, "This is really going up," that I was...
Well, the fact is...
16 and now I'll be at 30,000. I know, Dan.
The fact is, we have been so low that we have to make an adjustment and...
Can you scroll just a little?
Okay, so I do have a few things just because I want to get to it.
Yeah, please.
Development fees, variance application 5,000, zoning map amendment application 5,000. That seems low to me, but I guess my question is, what does that include?
We don't do very many.
Variances are very few and far between.
Well, that's what I mean, but isn't that like a very... 750?
They didn't change.
Oh, okay.
I didn't raise them.
Okay, and then replating of subdivisions, that seems like a lot, but is that more work for the surveyor versus...
That was my question. It was the replat.
Okay, okay. So, it is 3,000... Like, so a major for 5,000, is that?
Well, that's why we have major at 5,000 plus 2,000 for every...
Or 200, right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
200 for a lot.
Yeah, we'll really give it 2,000.
We didn't change that either.
And I think when we had talked to Christine, when we were talking about the annexation process, we dug deep into minor and major and she tried to explain that really, there's not too much of a difference as far as workload between the two. Right, okay.
It's the mailing out and all that stuff.
I think those are the numbers that might change, to be honest.
And I think we're also covered with... If any above fees do not fully cover the total cost processing, then...
Right, we've now shifted.
Yeah, we didn't...
You have to remember, those numbers were half of that.
Yeah, exactly. They were 2,500 before, right?
Yeah, so they've kicked them up.
No, 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 I'm happy with the increase. I just wanted to make sure it was sufficient.
I want to keep things moving forward because we have other things, but on first reading, does everyone think they have enough information right now?
Yes.
And then we should run the numbers based on what the treasurer has given us. And please send out tomorrow or whenever you get a chance, the updated, the way you calculated this?
I did send it. I've sent it to everybody twice.
When? What was the last time you sent it?
So, I sent it... I was supposed to send it after the meeting, forgot, and I sent it out, but I had sent it out previous to that once.
Can you send it again so it's on top of everyone's inbox?
Yep.
And then you have the opportunity...
Planning and zoning as well.
Everybody, yeah. And then you guys assess.
Yes, and then feedback would be great before the second reading.
Okay, because I'm going to talk to a bank to find out on construction draws. So, we talked about it and I want some sort of form letter that goes to the bank and find out, can your water and sewer be paid out of your construction draw so that people can keep some cash? Yes, that's the main goal. And I really just want it for single-family.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is that just... That's just a form letter that we...
No, I know, but I want to know, like, logistically, do we have to have something that's submitted to the bank? Blah, blah, blah. But I'll work on that later.
I would suggest you just work with Monica on that and she can come up with a form letter and...
Thank you, sure.
Well, I guess you're right, Danny.
When I say Monica, I mean staff. She can tell someone else to do it.
No, I'm glad that's...
I'm happy to help. I'm just tired.
So, goodbye. Any other comments, discussion?
No.
Andrea says, "Hit the gavel." Okay. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of Ordinance Number 2025-002, Building and Development Fee Schedule as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On first reading. Yes. Okay.
Aye.
Pass. Any opposed? None? Okay. Good job, everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-007, International Code Council Building Valuation Data, first reading.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion.
It's a no-brainer.
It makes sense.
Yeah, this is just kind of, it goes along with the previous...
Continuity, right, yes.
Any clarification that needs to happen before we take a vote?
Does it need to say a date of any sort? It doesn't need to say, like, the 2025, just as international...
Most recent.
Most recent, that's...
Do we need to put "most recent"?
Then we don't...
Is it not in there? I thought it was. I apologize.
Oh, maybe it's on yours. I'm just reading the agenda.
I'm sorry, we're not... If it says "most recent," let's...
Because they adopted every six months.
Tell me where it says, "Adopted..."
Oh, "shall be updated every six months." Okay.
Okay.
That was my question.
No, it does. It does.
It needs to say...
Oh, adopt the most recent version of the...
Every six months.
Which line are you on?
Which is updated every six months.
Yeah, keep it moving.
Sorry, that's... And there shouldn't be any other...
Okay, most recent.
Most recent building valuation.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry I missed that.
You're good. No, thank you. We wouldn't want to miss it.
Any other questions before I go to a vote?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of Ordinance Number 2025-007, International Code Council's Building Valuation Data and an ordinance adopting the International Code Council's Building Valuation Data, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. First reading. Opposed? None. Okay.
I move.
Sorry, I'm...
I move. I move to make a motion to approve second reading of Ordinance Number 2025-004, Special Use Permit.
Second.
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 She beat you to it. We have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion.
Just to let you know, this one was heavily edited since the first version.
Yes.
I have sent it. I sent it to Jim. He did make some changes to my redraft. His had some language about zoning, a special use permit will not be able to adjust zoning.
Right, okay, perfect.
So, we did some research and came up with this. If... Please, if you have any recommendations or changes, I'm open to it. We're just trying to...
Nope.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to, by taking that out, you're not going to be able to put, what would be an example, a triplex on a single-family lot sort of thing. You're not going to be able to come to town council and say, "I need this."
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure nothing was bypassed and that it fit more of the structure of our real estate law, which is, that's what a special use permit is. You're not changing something.
It would be great if you guys just took a look at it, make the new...
I will. This is a question for you, Jim. Special use permit, we do have language in the Land Use Development Code that said any mobile structure has to sit on a foundation.
Right.
This would be one of those where we could give, let them have a special use to allow that, but we don't have that yet until we get the third reading.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay.
The other thing is that we did put language in there that says you can put a timeframe on special use.
Because we have precedent. We did that for the old clinic.
And does that also mean that you can put something there that isn't within the same zone, zoning?
No.
Like...
No, no.
It has to be zoning compliant.
Okay.
Okay.
I like how at the last meeting, we had no idea what we would ever use this for. And now, two weeks later, here it is.
We've seen plenty of uses. Any further comments on second reading?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2025-004, Special Use Permit and Special Review on second reading, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None. Ordinance passed on second reading. Okay, moving down here, we've got Health and Safety and Noise Control.
Hi, Mo.
Do...
We do not... It's not on the table.
Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve on third reading, Ordinance Number 2024-007, Health, Safety, and Noise Control.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion.
Melissa Wilson, Town of Alpine, citizen. Just going through, I apologize, I did not realize that there was some other stuff that was added to this. It's my mistake. I did not read this until tonight. It looks like on number C, it looks probably 3.0. Letter C says mufflers, prevention of noise. It looks like on number C, it looks probably three point oh, letter C says mufflers, prevention of noise. Y'all have a car show here every year. Some of those hot rods, I don't have mufflers. You get a citizen here who does not like car shows.
We didn't edit that.
What's that?
We didn't edit that.
You did, well, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I just want, I didn't.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just pointing.
Hold on, are we looking at the latest?
I'm looking at what was on the website.
No, that's, no, awesome.
That was on the meetings on the website.
Do we have some language in there?
What do you mean?
So when I went to the meeting, I went to the link.
In the noise control?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying is the only thing.
Because, because of that, sorry, Mo.
Yes, sir.
I believe we had language years ago put in when we first did this because of, uh, uh, town events and whatnot, because of fireworks, kinda.
Yeah, fireworks, but this one specifically says mufflers.
Mufflers.
This one says mufflers, that shall be unlawful for any person to operate or the owner to cause any, any knowingly permit the operation of any vehicle or combination of vehicles within the town which is not equipped with adequate muffler in, uh, constant operation or poorly maintained to prevent any unnecessary noise. No muffler or exhaust system shall be modified or used without, with a cutoff, bypass, or similar device.
I, I think the intention of this was not for the car show, it was for.
Dirt bikes?
Everybody, yeah, it's, it's more for the.
So if you, if you go further down, section four, exceptions.
Mm-hmm.
G, noise, noise resulting from events, parties, or celebrations organized or permitted by the town.
Okay.
That's why I say, I knew we put in something more because of the, because of the fireworks.
Okay, well, but it's just fireworks, so we gotta.
No, 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 not, no, that, we put in noise reso- uh, uh.
Events.
Events.
I apologize, I, I was thumbing through it when I, yeah, so.
No, that's okay, Mo, I thought we lost it too, I thought we had a provision, I'm like, wait a minute, we had a provision, okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
And really, the only change, if I'm not mistaken, ma'am clerk, was the, um, back to the construction.
Mm-hmm, yes. Which I think was a lot more reasonable.
Okay.
And, uh, are you happy with the way the language reads on the construction activities?
Oh, yeah, that's fine, um, just because it doesn't limit the rest of us working staffs who work until six o'clock at night.
I think the time was just too confusing.
It was so strange.
And it's too confusing for a community to remember.
It is, it's hard.
Yeah.
We're not teetotomines, we're not somebody who needs to, we only seven-thirty to four-thirty with a lunch break, we don't need that stuff, that's why a lot of us moved here.
No, I think that's a good addition.
Thank you for your, your comments on that. Any, any other, um, excuse me?
Aye?
Yes, um, I just wanna make sure there's no other comments, questions, okay. Seeing none, um, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven, health, safety, and noise control, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, um, that's on third reading, uh, opposed? None, um, ordinance passes on third reading and is now a law. Uh, okay, good job, guys, let's keep working through this.
Then I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, prohibiting the extension of water and sewer services to properties located outside incorporated boundaries on the sec- incorporated boundaries of the town of Alpine on the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion? Has anyone, um, had any feedback from people in the community, um, any negative or positive feedback?
I haven't heard anything, man.
Probably not, I, I have active.
Attached a school to it.
Yeah.
Then they would know.
Oh, boy, we would fill this room if you attached a school, anyways, um, I will tell you that, just kind of anecdotally, I, I talked to someone that lives outside the town that would potentially be in an area that they could hook up to if, if they wanted to, because our water would at least be close to there. And, um, his reaction was, you should absolutely do this, um, how else are you going to entice people to annex into the town? You shouldn't just be giving away your resources, so that was somebody that potentially could be using this and taking advantage of our resources that's saying, good job, you guys should absolutely do that, so that's the only thing I've, um, heard specifically on this, but anyways.
I think it's much needed, and I'm happy we're getting the second reading.
Yeah, we'll have it in place soon, um, any other comments, questions? All right, uh, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, um, said motion, said ordinance on third reading, say aye?
Second.
Second reading, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, um, passes on second reading. All right, cruising, um, next is design review committee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve on first reading, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, design review committee.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, um, so this is an update, if I'm not mistaken, Monica, to the, um, original? It, design review committee, repeal and replace, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, this is, I have to admit, I haven't spent much time looking at this cuz I've been, uh,
So, to be fair, yeah, this is just an update to, um, the creation of the design review committee because, and I haven't, I don't think we've heard back about what, when they actually wanna have their meetings, um, we are going to pay them fifty dollars a meeting.
Right.
Similar to, um, the planning and zoning.
We're establishing that here, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct, so that establishes that, and there was some other tweets.
Compensation, yeah.
Like, it, you know, the town of Alpine is actually providing their secretary, similar to the Landy's Development Code, that is, you know, Christine takes care of that gene, it's gonna take care of them. And so there was just some cleanup of some language about how things are actually being done. And, um, Sarah was also supposed to attach the, um, design, the.
The guidelines.
The guidelines, and they got, they, they got missed unfortunately, um, because of the two design review. Only one got attached on Thursday, so I told her, just hold off, then we'll do it next meeting on the ninth, the first reading of that, the, their guideline.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Got attached.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I think it's okay, I, I just wanna make sure, um, that we, we've updated the members, their terms, all that stuff, and they're gonna get paid now. We just need to verify with them, and we have time to do it, which day they wanna have their meetings. They're gonna have monthly meetings, and it plays perfectly into our strategy with things that come in, um, they're gonna go to, let's see. I shouldn't even say it, but, um, we've, we figured out how it's gonna work within our land use development code and everybody, um, in the whole process, so I'm comfortable with it. Do you guys have any questions on this?
No.
Okay, um, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, design review committee, repeal and replace, on first reading, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we have a, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, is there a repeal and replace on?
Yeah, it's at the very top.
Lost.
Okay, aye.
Um, opposed? None, um, ordinance pass on first reading. Yeah, so this is, that was the one that replaced the original one.
Gotcha.
Uh, okay, next is the Yost printer-copier proposal. This, I talked to this gentleman, basically, they buy out our current lease on that piece of equipment. It's, it's a piece, according to what I hear from the staff, um, they buy it out, we enter into a, a new contract, it's actually less than our current contract. The per copy cost is similar, so, um, I think it's.
Monica, forgive me, I feel like I'm in déjà vu, we had talked about this, we had discussed this before, are we simply implementing it now? Because you were trying to find something that would take over the lease, but also get us a better rate for color copies, the town logo, okay.
Yeah, and so it's, it's the exact same proposal, well, it's updated, it was the same exact.
It's actually less this year, cuz the lease is, has been paid, paid off, you know.
So, we save about fifty bucks a month on the lease payment, um, I did a calculation based on just our black and white, we're, we're, we'll definitely save another hundred or two hundred dollars a month, depending on how much.
And my question, I think last time that this was brought up, was maintenance and support.
That is the biggest change.
You felt like they had better support.
Way better support.
Yes, and it's, and all that's covered on the per copy charge, so the nice thing about this one is, if we just do, if this is the only color right here.
Right.
We get charged less than a full color copy, black and white is, is, is actually a fraction of any more.
Okay.
But it's, but because of the difference.
And maintenance is all bundled into it.
It's all bundled into it, all the, all the supplies, we just have to provide the paper.
Yeah, uh, let's get a motion on the table.
Make a motion, seeking to accept proposal from Yost for the Kayacera?
Mm-hmm.
Task Kalafa? Fifty-fifty-four CI color copier and authorize Mayor Green to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion?
So, will the old copier be removed by?
Yeah, so what they do is, they take it and they store it for the length of the remaining lease, and then when the lease is up, they deliver it to them, we don't, we don't have to do anything.
So we don't get to take it out back and beat it with a?
Nope. No, someone else, someone else is gonna own it, that'd be awesome, though.
That would be awesome.
Thank you, thank you for recognizing that.
Yeah, um, any other discussion on that? I think this is a total positive, and the staff is who brought this to us, basically, so.
You had me at less.
Yes.
Better support, less money.
Exactly.
All in.
Um, all those in favor of said motion regarding the, uh, printer-copier, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, uh, motion carries, uh, okay, next.
So I'm gonna recommend that you table this, because if we're gonna change the meetings to every two weeks, this may become not necessary.
Why don't we just discuss it now and get it over?
Oh, you're welcome to.
Yeah, let's just.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, authorization for the town clerk to approve and issue catering permits.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion, I wanna verify this number double oh seven, that's someplace else.
Yeah.
Isn't that?
No, it's twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
I was thinking.
Okay.
No, there is a twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, it's ICC, VVD, building closing.
Oh, yes. Twenty twenty-five dash.
Oh, that's an ordinance, and this is a.
Ordinance.
It's a resolution.
Never mind.
A good catch.
Good catch, I just had one.
Are we fine on that, Monica?
Question, Monica, and, and mine's just related to time, so what is the change that's happening here, and is this?
Yeah, so primarily, um, we did review the statute, the statute doesn't require it to go necessarily to town council. Um, the, and we reviewed the liquor license, but part of it, it was about timing, but if we're gonna go to meetings every two weeks, I don't think this is necessary. I'd, I'd prefer just to put it on your agenda and let you deal with it.
For me, I just think about the responsibilities that we're already placing on you, and we're about to go into a pretty intense budget session, so if we could take something.
Oh, I don't, I don't do liquor licenses, I mean, I would just sign, I would review the and sign it, I don't actually.
We need the next resolution to put a bed and.
Yeah, good, really.
He's gonna need one, honestly, okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that we're focusing you where we need.
No, thank you, but honestly, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary, if we're gonna do meetings every two weeks, it's just, we're missing.
Who's signing it now?
With the events, um, it comes to town council at a meeting.
And then we, well, no, I know it comes to us, but as far as authorizations.
He signs it, yeah.
And it, it's just, they don't have to wait for me to sign it, it's under the authority, just sign it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But this was to allow it to happen between the thirty days for the meeting, because people were getting them here not enough time to get on the agenda and missing that mark.
We had it happen, we had to retroactively do one recently, so this, this would solve that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions for her on that? All right, all those in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, congratulations, Monica.
Thank you.
One more.
I'll stop it on you.
She was looking for stuff to do.
Yes.
Um, all right, let's talk about the, uh, uh, we've got one thing on the table that i- if you guys are interested in pulling off, we can discuss that. Uh, we need three out of four of town council members to vote to take something off the table, but we would need a motion to do this.
Okay, I move to make a motion to remove from the table, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, comprehensive master plan steering committee. Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, um, any discussion on removing this from the table? All those in favor of, uh, removing resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five from the table, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, uh, not I, not me, I'm sorry, I can't vote, so the four, did you vote?
I said aye.
Okay, so we had four, uh, town council members, so now it's back on the table, um, and now we need a motion.
Back on the agenda.
Yeah, now we need a motion to discuss it.
I move to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, comprehensive master plan steering committee. Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion?
Why was this not, why were we not able to vote last time?
Okay, just a clarification, um, last time, uh, Jim was not here, and I wish he would have been here, but.
Cuz we were allowed to vote.
We, we kind of, um, missed the, the ball because, um.
I was concerned that two members of council were on the committee and therefore couldn't vote.
Yeah.
To approve a committee that they're on, but since none of us were here, nobody was, that was here really knew, I think it was appropriate to put it on the table until we had the right answer.
Yeah, well, no, I just wanna make sure moving forward, we understand the parameters.
Now we know it's okay.
Okay.
Uh, I would tell everyone, there has been a, a change here, um, I made the suggestion to remove Shay and put Dave Jenkins on. If, if Shay, if you feel like you're overcommitted.
I, I kinda don't like the seven male, two female ratio, cuz roughly, we're fifty percent female in Alpine. So I'm trying to figure out, I'm okay to give up my spot, I just feel like I would like another female in my spot. And I'm not sure with what Dave Jenkins has going, that he has time for the master steering committee. Um, I just feel like, yeah.
He has told me that he's committed to it, so, I mean, it's really between six to eight meetings over the next twelve months, just like I've already told you guys.
Yeah.
Um, honestly, I, I had another female that was interested, um, Kelly Shackleford said it, she would be interested in serving. She's another female and another Realtor, so that was a concern that you had, so.
But she doesn't live within the town of Alpine.
She doesn't, and, and there's other people on here that don't live in the town of Alpine, but, um, right, right now, we have nine people on the list, and the suggestion was to always have a odd number.
Odd number.
I don't want to really add a bunch more people on here, but, um, I wanna give Shay the opportunity, if she feels like she has enough time to commit or wants to be on it, I'm more than happy to put you back on and add Kelly back, uh, Kelly would service well, then we have eleven.
Oh, so go to eleven.
Okay.
Um.
This one goes to eleven.
Nice reference.
And you brought it up earlier, and it was an aspect that I hadn't considered, and, and I do think it's a valid one, however, we decide to move forward with that, but to have three local developers with local interests is definitely something to consider.
So, my opinion is nine is too many.
Yeah.
I, I think you should cut it down to five.
Right.
I think. Not enough.
I, I don't think you're gonna get anything done, you're gonna have this, 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 this going on, it's, it's hard enough.
I appreciate your, your opinion.
It's hard enough to get three people in planning and zoning.
Yeah, I appreciate, we're, we're committed, everyone here has committed to.
They're great people on planning.
Well, let's be, let's be honest, it's gonna be, as much as these people all say they're committed, getting eleven people in a meeting twelve times over the next year, all at the same time, slim to none.
Okay, so then.
There will always be a couple that aren't there, so that gives you enough people to talk.
For form.
Yeah, exactly, to have a good discussion and have enough, yeah.
Exactly, and we're going to have the meetings in the afternoon, um, so hopefully, we can figure out a time when everyone can, uh, get the meeting either before they leave town, hopefully their bosses or whomever let them, you know, take an hour out of their day to, to do this, you know, up to twelve times over the next twelve months. Everyone has committed to it, I don't think, um, it, we're gonna have to be super organized, I'll tell you that, but the, the consultant has recommended that nine is like kind of the, the limit that we should go for, a- after that, it does become too much. So, with that being said, I, I just wanna let you give the final say on what you wanna do.
Honestly, the way I am working with Sue on this gravel pit, I mean, I'm spending five to six hours a week on it. five to six hours a week on it. Again, though, if I vote nay, I just think it should be a female versus Dave, but I'm not going to die on that sword, so I shall let it go.
Well, my, my interest in having Dave on this committee is that he was born and raised here, his parents were integral in the forming of this town, and I think that he has historical perspective. I'm not looking at him as a developer, I'm looking at him as historical perspective, and his family ran, he was the previous owner of the most successful business in this town and largest. So, he's got other qualifications that have a lot to add to the master plan committee.
I hope there's a lot of public comment.
Well, that's, that's the goal, and, and in the meetings we've had with Cushing-Tarrell, I mean, they are definitely proactive for, they want as much public interaction, they've committed to coming to mountain days, and...
And of course, we're always welcome to jump in and be on the meetings too as well.
We have to be a little careful with that because of open meeting laws, and that's, that's why...
We can take turns.
Jim, can you clarify?
You take one, I'll take one, we'll all go to one.
Jim, can you clarify about, like, if...
Open meeting law?
About open meeting law in steering committees.
Good caution to have, because if you've got, you know, your quorum on there and you're discussing things, or how you're going to vote, or directing how you're going to vote, then come, yeah, I think we should keep it to a minimum as far as...
Okay, so right now, we only have a meeting as a town council member on there, so, I mean, I would think that you guys could, obviously, we keep that spot open, anyone can like participate or come on the call. We haven't figured out the logistics of whether or not we can get them on YouTube, or if they're just going to be open or whatever, but this is kind of the next step to do that, so...
Well, again, I mean, this, Cushing-Tarrell told us the steering committee was just going to make sure that things moved forward, protocol is set, everybody is going to have ample opportunity to voice, so I'm not concerned about the public not being represented.
Yep, and it's really, they said, "We're only going to be meeting when there's some, they give us something specific that we need to comment on or direct them on," so they're not going to be scheduled like every two weeks or anything, obviously, if we only have, you know, eight to 12 meetings, so I'm comfortable with this, everyone's committed, but, you know, I just want to know if there's any suggestions, let's, for changes, let's do it now.
There is one schedule.
Hasn't been decided.
There is that one determined schedule.
So...
We're working.
Matt, I'm not picking on you, I'm glad you're still here, I don't have a disdain for the airpark, but I have high concern when it was reached out to us that, one, we haven't received their donation yet, two, that they threatened to, threatened to hold fundings if the school didn't go their way. So, as we walk down this road with Cushing-Tarrell, if they pull out or just decide not to pay, where does that leave us?
I, I have not, as a councilperson, I have not received any formal communication from the airpark saying that they would pull funding. So, I'm sure private conversations happened, but nothing has hit my official inbox.
I don't know where you're at with the, writing out the check, but...